If you're ready, then I will call to order the county council meeting on May 11th, 2021 at 7:30. First up is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which stands the Constitution of America indivisible and every beingness in this world. Roll call, please.
Alder Allen?
Present.
Alder Aratafrata?
Here.
Alder Dearher?
Here.
Alder Herbs?
Here.
Alder Maldonado?
Here.
Mayor Richardson?
Here.
Alder Strassman?
Here.
Alder Udell?
Here.
Alder Wheeler?
Here.
Your little forum.
All right, thank you. We have two proclamations tonight. First one is EMS Week. And we have Chief Patrick Anderson with us here today, the head of Fitchroona EMS. All right, so we're recognizing Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service. And whereas, the members of the Fitchroona EMS team are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas, the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of the Fitchroona EMS and all emergency medical service providers by recognizing Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, I, Aaron Richardson, mayor, along with the Pittsburgh City Council, do hereby recognize the week of May 16 to 22, 2021 as Emergency Medical Services Week, and to further extend appreciation to the Fitchroona EMS for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to communities they serve, proclaiming this 11th day of May, 2021. And I'd like to just say that I know some people in the medical field here in the area, and they are more of the experts than I am, and they can't say enough great things about the Fitchroona EMS and how lucky we are here in Pittsburgh and Verona to have the Fitchroona EMS. And you don't want to have a knuckle emergency, but they've told me that if you do, Pittsburgh is a good place to have it because of the services that we have. And I know the last two years, maybe you want to speak to this, chief, I know that our teams have won a state award, and maybe you can speak a little bit more to that as well, and so I'll let you have the mic.
Sure, thank you very much. Thank you to the city council and all of the members of the staff here who have been very supportive of Fitchroona throughout the years, our growth, and especially during this last year where it's been challenging for everybody, and our providers have been out there in the front lines continuing to face these challenges, so thank you. But yes, actually, the last two years, we've had two separate providers we recognized for outstanding pediatric care with two very specific cases. Obviously, you can't share them, but two pediatric cases that got both outstanding care and, yeah, recognized by the state for our participation in those for residents in our district. So, thank you.
And I don't think anyone's here for Public Works Week that I can see, so you don't need to take a picture, just reading it, Scott. All right, so, May 16 to 22 is National Public Works Week. Whereas, public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services are of vital importance to sustainable communities and to the health, safety, and well-being of the residents of the city of Pittsburgh. And whereas, such facilities and services cannot be provided without the efforts of public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees of government and the private sector who plan, design, build, inspect, operate, and maintain the transportation, water supply, wastewater collection, wastewater treatment structures and facilities, and provide other services that are essential to serve our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of the United States of America to learn about and maintain an interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, this year's theme, Stronger Together, challenges citizens to think about the role public works plays in creating a great place to live. By working together, the impact citizens and public works professionals can have on their communities is magnified and results in the ability to accomplish goals once thought unattainable. And whereas, the American Public Works Association has celebrated the annual National Public Works Week since 1960. Now, therefore, I, Aaron Richardson, mayor of the city of Pittsburgh, along with members of the Pittsburgh City Council, do hereby recognize May 16 to 22, 2021 as National Public Works Week in the city of Pittsburgh, and urge all our citizens and civic leaders to join the representatives of the American Public Works Association to express appreciation to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to our health, safety, welfare, and quality of life, proclaiming this 11th day of May, 2021. And I know Bill is online, I'm not going to stand by the screen and take a picture with him, but if there's anything, Bill, you'd like to speak to, I know that we do a lot of great things and great projects here in Pittsburgh, and the Public Works Department is at the core of that. Is there anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I just want to express my thanks to the team that we have for Public Works. We are a big family that reaches out to everybody in the community and within our administration as well. There's anything that anybody in our department wouldn't do for anybody, and we're out there all 24 hours a day, you know, making sure things are working at night, so when you wake up in the morning, you can flush your toilet and take a drink of water. A lot of that stuff goes unseen. We try to get the roads all clogged before everybody gets out there in the morning so they can get to work, and emergency services can be continued, and we're really a vital role in the departments of planning and development. So, you know, we're just trying to look out for our community and do the best we can with what we have, and we'd really appreciate the opportunity to serve Pittsburgh and everything and everybody in the community.
Yeah, I know that about a month or so ago, I got an email from a resident that her young son was just enthralled by someone doing some chipping of branches and shrubs, and so he kept picking up little sticks and bringing them over to the employee, and the employee would put it in the shredder for him, and she was just really, you know, happy and, I guess, thankful that the employee was so generous with his time and, you know, just kind of helping her kid out a little bit and showing the interest, and so I thought it was a really nice thing that I heard from citizens, and I know that there's lots of of employees like that. Yes, Dave?
This is a good, you know, a little historical background. Bill is the fifth director of public works that we've had in Pittsburgh, so we've been very blessed, you know, who's ever been in that position, is very skilled, and we were, again, we were pleased when Bill was willing to step up and take this position after we had, you know, kind of some turnover over a couple of years, but we have a lot of really dedicated, long-term employees, you know, that says a lot about the group, and we have some, you know, some new employees that are just outstanding, you know, so that tells you people are, it's a good place to work, so I'm very proud of our, as you know, you hear me say it quite a bit, I'm very proud of our public works department here in Pittsburgh.
I know you've been on Board of Public Works for a long time, working with that group. All right, moving along to mayoral appointments, we've got a couple of new appointments. I believe Jesse is online, and Jesse is up for appointment to the Board of Review. Jesse, do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on Board of Review?
Sure. Hi, guys. My name is Jesse, and I recently, I have lived in Wisconsin all my life, and recently moved from Sun Prairie to Pittsburgh as a job. I'm a project manager for Pella and Verhalen, so I work with a lot of homes and been in construction ever since I was about 18 with family and all that, and got to learn the ropes and worked a lot with homes and apartments, and so wanted to get my feet wet and get, just to help out with community and everything and see where it goes and maybe make a difference along the way, and thought this would be a great way to start.
All right, does anyone have any questions for Jesse? Seeing none, if someone wants to do a motion, that'd be-
Move approval.
Moved by Jay?
Second.
Signed by Dave, all in favor of approving Jesse, say aye.
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 And oppose nay. All right, so that's approved, thank you, Jesse. And we also have, yeah, we also have Josh Nackert, and Josh is online as well. Josh, do you want to tell us a little about yourself and your experience and why you're interested in serving on this committee, RCC?
Sure. My name is Josh Nackert, I am a lifetime Wisconsin resident as well, with a history as a researcher, a scientific communicator, and now I'm working for Exact Sciences as a grant specialist. But I've always been incredibly, you know, a strong advocate for the Wisconsin environment and Wisconsin natural resources, and so after moving to Pittsburgh a couple of years ago, I've wanted to find ways to get involved in the environmental side of my community, and so this felt like a really natural fit for that, and it's definitely an area where I think I can leverage my scientific background and my communications background to hopefully help the committee and contribute in any way I can.
All right, are there questions for Josh, Dave?
Josh, you have things that might be priority for you, that you're particularly interested in, you know, that you have passion for, I know there's probably quite a few, but maybe you could highlight those for us?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I'm particularly interested in, I've been lucky enough to be part of the ad hoc committee for the Stoner Prairie Park, and seeing the kind of amazing overarching parks plan and the way that Fitchburg is looking to preserve, you know, much of the green space for many years to come, and see that as a corridor and kind of a calling card for the community. I think that's an incredible way to promote recreation and conservation, as well as giving our residents kind of that space and those many amenities. So I would say that's a big one, and then I think as a community, I'm very proud of the fact that we have, you know, a very large solar installment here, and so I think finding ways to further partner with, you know, installations of that type to find ways to feature the current installation and maybe even weave in some additional conservation elements or, you know, lessons or learnings to come out of that project as well. Thank you.
Any other questions? Or a motion?
I move approval.
Good.
Gabriella, and signed by Randy, I believe, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay. All right, that is approved as well, thank you, Josh.
Thanks, everyone.
And then we have one reappointment of Rich Tate, the plant commission, and for reappointments, we generally just approve those, or unless you, or unapprove them, I guess, if we don't have, make them come in, I should say.
So moved.
Moved by Jay, signed by Dave, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay. All right, then Rich is also approved. All right, consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Jay?
Second.
Signed by Joe. Is there anything that people want to take out? I actually have one myself, I'm going to take out B4 and separate that one. Is there anything else that anyone wants to separate out?
The minutes.
The minutes, all right. Anything else? All right, then all in favor of approving everything except for the minutes and B4, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay. All right, and then minutes, Gabriella?
Oh, the minutes on, it's page two of the minutes under mayoral appointments, it lists Jesse Pringle, but we didn't actually vote on him then, we voted on him today, so I don't know, I feel like we should remove that. That's it.
All right, would you like to make a motion to approve as amended?
I move to approve the draft minutes as amended.
Second.
Signed by Jay, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay. All right, that is approved, and then for B4, I also want to add the Eaganrill Affairs Commission to the referrals based on staff request.
Move as amended.
All right, moved by Jay, signed by Joe, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay. All right, that is approved, there's a lot of things on here, so that's good, a lot happening. All right, Mike, do you want to do the administrator's report quick?
Sure. Thank you, mayor. For the public, the city hall is open to the public now as of yesterday, May 10th, so we've got coverage in all departments. We're continuing to operate with a hybrid system, so you might have some employees that are still teleworking regular days each week, so if you're looking to come in and meet with a specific city hall employee, it's best to kind of reach out in advance and schedule an appointment, or just make sure that they're there the particular day that you might be coming into city hall. Masks and social distancing are still required, and we're operating in our public meetings with a hybrid of both in-person and Zoom for that, so, but you're welcome to come and visit us at city hall. The library is also open, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, they're offering in-person service and availability, and then Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays, they're operating with curbside at this point in time. The senior center is also starting to bring some programs back. Pre-registrations are required for the programs that they're currently offering, and again, masks and social distancing are required. In June, they'll start to bring back more of their programming as well for our senior citizens. Council members should have received an email from Fact TV with the different department introductions there, so once you have a chance to watch those introductory videos from the respective city departments, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to department heads if you want to meet with us and learn more about our individual departments. The assessing department had sent out assessment notices and postcards. Open book starts this Friday and runs through the 20th, and then Board of Review is scheduled for June 7th. And then on Thursday of this week, Encore Senior Living will be hosting an informational meeting on a potential senior housing development that would include independent assisted living and memory care. This would be on the western side of McKee Farms Park on lots 53 and 54. So on Thursday, May 13th, at 5:30 PM at the McKee Farms Park Indoor Shelter, they're inviting the public to come to an informational meeting to learn more about that development as they work with the alders and eventually hope to bring forward a formal proposal to wind its way through the city approval process there. So come out to that, you're welcome to learn more on senior housing from Encore Senior Living. And I think that covers everything.
All right, any questions for Mike, Jay?
Mike, is that Lot 53 and 54 project going to be a public posted meeting?
For this Thursday?
Yeah.
No, it's not. It's hosted by the developer, yeah, it's the informal meeting that we request them to hold.
Right, no, I understand, I just want to know if, how aware the public is of it. Have they done a mailing to the neighborhood or anything?
Yeah, they've been reaching out, and I know they've been working with the alders, and we sent them the neighborhood associations and the mailing, so they're working to get the word out, I think.
There is an event on Facebook that I put together, so if anyone wants, if it's easy to share it that way, and there's an image on there and a PDF, and if anyone wants to share it, let me know, and I can send you the information you can-
Well, as Michael knows, this is for probably the last two decades, this, these, this area has been a hot potato, anytime it gets touched, it explodes, so I just want to be sure that everybody who could possibly want to be involved in this process at all has the opportunity to, because, you know, we don't need another explosion.
I'm going to send it to all the alders now, in case you want to share it.
Julia?
We have done a due diligence, I know the history of that, I live two blocks away from those lots, so I know the history, and all the neighbors that were very against prior development have been notified, so, yes, so.
All right, other questions for Mike at all? Seeing none, Joe, do you want to amend the agenda? Joe?
Yes, I would, I would like to move R 10521 up to the top.
Mr. Mayor, I have a point of order before we do that, and this may get Tracy involved. I was noticing under referrals to committees and commissions, item 5C has all the stuff going to public safety that we took action on tonight, and it seems like that shouldn't be a referral, it seems like the council should be taking action on those things tonight.
No, so, the 5C stuff is all consent agenda approved. Yeah?
Oh, so this, it's not a referral, okay, never mind then.
Nope, that one's just approved, it's not a referral, sorry. Joe, go ahead and continue. So you want to move 10521 to, I'm sorry, where, right now?
To the top, we've got a couple people in the audience that are going to give up a comment on it.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Signed by Jay, all in favor of moving, of moving R 10521 to right now, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay? All right, so we are on this, Joe, do you want to do the motion?
Absolutely. I would like to, excuse me, let me get my screens right, I would like to move to approve resolution R 10521, amending the 2021 general fund budget, redirecting donations and funding to the teen center study.
Second.
All right, cited by Jay, and did finance approve?
Yes, it did.
It did, all right, and this is, because this is a budget amendment, we do need two-thirds to, for this to approve, this is actually one of five items tonight that we're going to need a two-thirds vote, which means six out of eight need to approve. Joe, do you want to just give a quick overview before we go to the speakers?
Sure, so we discussed this in the April 13th meeting, but I've got some changes, which I can go into a little bit more detail with after speakers go, but essentially, this would be to be able to move forward with the funding of the teen center study. I've talked about it in the meetings, so I won't necessarily rehash most of that, but what I will say is, one thing I just want to reemphasize is that, you know, when you look at the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative grants, the real heart of that grant is to encourage and promote youth development, among other things, in the Barrow West neighborhood, the Belmar neighborhood, and the North Fish Hattery Road neighborhood. The, this study will be important, not only in doing that, particularly after COVID-19 and the pandemic, which has left a lot of youth without, you know, human interaction, without the ability to connect, without the ability to, you know, take leadership roles in their community, and it will be able to also, in another sense, provide invaluable data that we'll be able to use for future purposes beyond just a teen center. So I will be just giving you all a heads up that I'll be making an amendment once we get into it, but first I'll let the public speak, and then I will defer to a few city staff to give some more background information.
All right, and a reminder to the public that the public has three minutes to speak, and Scott, who would you like to speak first? All right, Ryan, go ahead.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for allowing me time to speak here, my name is Ryan Astralla. I've been a Pittsburgh resident for over 16 years. I'm also a community social worker, and much of my work is in the Pittsburgh areas around the L.A. Drive neighborhood, and I'm also the chair of the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative Grant Committee, but I do want to make clear that I'm here just on behalf of myself and not on behalf of anyone else or any other group or entity. So I'm here to state that I fully support using the unspent HNI grant monies to fund the teen center study in the Verona Road West area. I'm familiar with this community, and I know it, it is an area that it's growing rapidly in both population and diversity. However, it is also an area that severely lacks resources. My feeling is that since there are funds available, let's use them to determine how best we can help support families in this neighborhood now, in a comprehensive and well-thought-out manner, rather than trying to plug in a mix of resources at different times later on down the road. I've seen that happen way too often, and honestly, is much more costly and much less effective. So I encourage all of you to vote yes to funding the teen center study, so that the center, so that the city of Pittsburgh is better positioned to ensure the success of this community and its families, not just now, but for many years to come. And that's all I want to say.
All right, thank you. Would you like to go next, Scott? All right, Karen, go ahead.
Hi, thanks for listening tonight, I spoke on this last month as well, and I'm really glad to see it being reconsidered tonight. I do work for a couple of nonprofits that routinely are searching for ways to engage teens in Pittsburgh and the surrounding areas, and as Alder Maldonado mentioned, there are severe lack of opportunities for teens all around the city, but particularly in the area that this teen center would exist. I don't think I need to convince you that the teen center is important, the council supported that when it came through last year, but the fact is, the sooner that this study gets done, the sooner we can begin to build a healthy and functioning teen center that will last for years to come and be built according to the needs of the neighborhood and the people who will be using that teen center, who, by the way, are all Pittsburgh taxpayers, and we should be considering how their tax dollars will be spent and how they want their tax dollars to be spent, just as much as anyone else who is able to speak on these matters. I was raised in the Belmar neighborhood and had many friends in the Verona West area and spent a lot of time there, and, you know, this is an area that, you know, the reason why it's part of the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative is this area in particular routinely gets the short end of the stick when it comes to investing city dollars into opportunities for the residents that live here. A few specific examples you may remember are the Verona School District's consideration of where to cite schools, and the demands of, or the asks from the neighborhood to make services more available to the teens there. And so, you know, it's really important that Pittsburgh gets this long overdue center built. Doing a study, we know that's very important, and the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative is there to formulate and implement a strategic, collaborative, and holistic approach to address specific issues. Well, we can't be strategic, collaborative, holistic, or address specific issues without a comprehensive study, and $40,000 is not very much for a study of this kind, but it will pay us back probably tenfold over the years by investing this. I'm thrilled to hear that the Grant Committee supports this change, it's already been approved by the Finance Committee, and so I see no reason why the council should oppose this resolution tonight, so I hope that you will take these issues into account and also the changes made since last month and vote yes on this resolution. Thanks.
Thank you. Scott, anyone else online? Oh, yeah, Dorothy Crowsey, that's a familiar name. Go ahead, Dorothy.
Yeah, we know me, Dorothy Crowsey, I just stopped being an alder in this year. I was on council for 10 years, and I am still on the county board, so I'm still very politically active. I wrote a little bit of a statement that I'm going to read, it says, again and yet again, "We need to understand the needs of the people that live in our community, as well as the historical content that brought us to where we are. First off, people need to understand that all of Pittsburgh isn't the city that many residents are familiar with. In fact, when you look at where people live, you end up seeing that far more than half of the residents of Pittsburgh live north of Highway PD, McKee Road, and to the west of Fish Hattery Road. That is more than 50% of us that live in about 10% of the landmass of the city. The vast majority of them live in concentrated areas of older apartment complexes and single-family or duplex homes on smaller lots, generally a quarter of an acre or less. Since those neighborhoods were generally built out in the late 60s and early 70s, and so are about 50 years old now, and have been becoming less desirable for most, but welcomed for many with limited income that need more affordable housing options. There are a lot of factors that go into why things develop as they do, but the fact is that we have a lot of folks living in Pittsburgh- but the fact is that we have a lot of folks living in Pittsburgh that don't have the income to support market rate housing and need us to help them sort out issues that tend to follow low income neighborhoods. Pittsburgh's Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative has been part of that solution seeking. One thing that most white folks are generally not aware of, but our white society has created, is that in poor black areas, and as a matter of course, in all black families, most of the parents raise their children with a different sort of awareness of policing than is familiar to us. In many families, especially those that have lived in poverty for generations, many kids grow up knowing they'll end up in interactions with police and are very likely to end up with a record and probably will spend time in jail or prison. At the same time, they are being bombarded with the existence of all the good things in life that better off people take for granted, but they don't and won't have access to. So they find whatever ways they can get to get a bit of that good life. Some of those things are ways are things that we don't approve of. I'd really rather that the teen center was referred to as a teen resource center that would better reflect its true intent. It would be there to help guide young people that are at risk of becoming involved with the system and help them sort out better paths with the assistance of any number of nonprofit agencies that would be available to them.
I need to cut you off, Dorothy.
Support this study of the community needs for what I know will be an individual asset to the community.
Is there anyone else online? All right, go ahead and do those.
Hello, my name is Katie Trudnik. I am a District One resident of Pittsburgh and I live at twenty four eleven Tahoe Drive. I'm a graduate student studying veterinary medicine and public health at the University of Wisconsin-Madison, and I also serve as a member of the Grant Committee for the Friends of the Teen Center. I'd like to start by welcoming our new and returning alders and thank you for your commitment to serving our community. I am here to testify tonight in support of resolution R one oh five twenty one and the use of the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative Grant Funds for the Teen Center Community Engagement Study. At the Common Council Meeting on April thirteenth, concerns were raised about using H and I funds in the study. I would like to address these concerns by providing some historical context for the resolution that you will be voting on tonight. In 2017, the Anton Drive Redevelopment Plan identified the need for a community center at Verona Road West, a neighborhood that was also identified as a priority neighborhood by the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative in 2019. In 2020, as I shortly do not need to remind you, a pandemic gripped the globe, which leads me to ask, as a public health student, how has the pandemic impacted the youth in this neighborhood? Youth who have already been identified as a priority, as as a need. I would wager that their need for a community space has increased. And as their need has increased, so too should their priority to this council. When will their need be enough? The Healthy Neighborhood Initiative was started for the purpose of providing to these youth to build positive community change in six areas: education, life skills, care, mobility, healthy lifestyles, and healthy landscapes. These six pillars also encompass the goals of the teen center. What a great opportunity to use unused H and I funds from 2020 in exactly the same way that they were intended to be used. Supporting this resolution will elevate the voices of youth and families in need and provide invaluable data to our city that will inform more equitable decisions and policies for our community, for our future. Again, I urge you to use your vote to support resolution R one oh five twenty one and the use of Healthy Neighborhood Initiative Grant Funds for the Teen Center Community Engagement Study. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Pranisha Clifton, and I am the Director of Youth Protection and Compliance for the University of Wisconsin System. I am also a graduate of the University of Wisconsin, and I have been advocating for youth supports in this community since nineteen ninety nine. Not only am I an advocate for youth, but I'm also a chair of the Friends of the Teen Center for Pittsburgh. And I chose to take this on because I believe that there is no greater investment than you can make than in our youth. I'm here today in support of resolution one oh five dash twenty one. I have to ask, would our community be as hesitant to support this teen center if I told you that this teen center was actually a school? According to the Form for Youth Investment, six out of ten youth will not be ready for life by the age of twenty one. And when we talk about life readiness, we're talking about the skills that you get outside the classroom. So those socio emotional skills, that's cooking, that's mental wellness, that's, you know, everything that you don't normally get in the classroom. And I have to wonder if we would get this kind of pushback in the community if they saw this more as a schooling or education opportunity versus a place for just teens to hang out. Because this teen center would be more than that. I know some of you may be concerned about how this will run and what supports are there, but as the Chair of the Friends of the Teen Center, I can tell you firsthand that we have a number of committee members that are from the community. They're community leaders. We also have a number of experts in youth activities, as well as educators, as well as parents that are all here in support of these three hundred youth that this teen center could possibly serve. So I've been advocating for youth programming for many years, and I think what happens along the way is that many people forget that there is a holistic need in supporting our youth. And there is no greater time than now because our youth are in crisis now more than ever before. Now, you're wondering where are we going to come up the money and all this kind of stuff, but I just start to ask the question. Once again, if this was a school, would you hesitate to fund it if your community needed additional education resources? Lastly, I want to point out that Madison and this area is considered one of the worst places in the U S to raise black families. And having resources like this in your community could help retain the best and the brightest because, one, it would make the community more welcoming to black and brown folks. This would also be marketable to employers who want to recruit and retain the best. They can invest in communities that do not produce populations for their workforce. Investing in this teen center is a holistic investment in your community. It supports the youth, it supports your business leaders, and it supports your families. I encourage you to support resolution one oh five dash twenty one.
Good evening, Mayor Richardson and Pittsburgh City Council members. My name is Sean Koval. I'm a strong supporter of the Pittsburgh Teen Center that's planned for Jamestown, and you probably recognize me because I've come in person and Zoom and have spoken to you all before about the importance of this project and similar projects that that aim to provide spaces for underserved youth. In South Madison, Pittsburgh, across Dan County, where there is just less opportunity for residents, community members and youth to connect and convene with one another, to break bread, to have to receive much needed services, and to socialize. This is a really important, of course, set of experiences for our youth, particularly in Jamestown. I know through the Anton Drive study and other studies that have been recently done that the needs and the number of students and residents that that would access a teen center around there is immense. And so I really encourage you all to fully fund the study in order to just plan for the best possible scenarios moving forward. And, you know, Healthy Kids Collaborative and myself are fully supportive of these efforts, and we look forward to continuing to work with you all and to connect with others in Pittsburgh across the community around Healthy Neighborhood Initiative programs and particularly the study and eventual launch of this teen center project. Thank you for your time and have a wonderful night.
I think there's one more, right Scott? All right.
My name is Wendy Hathaway. My husband and I have lived in Pittsburgh for over ten years now in the Porry Hill neighborhood, and I'm speaking tonight in support of R one oh five twenty one to redirect funding to the teen center engagement study. Last summer, I was so inspired hearing folks testify in front of the Common Council about the proposed teen center and the positive impact that it will have on Pittsburgh's young people and our entire community. It's become clear to me there's a gap that needs to be filled, a safe space for hundreds of youth ages thirteen to seventeen that is not being filled by existing organizations or programming. This is a need that has to be addressed, and I see the teen center as an investment in equity and in the future of Pittsburgh, all of Pittsburgh. And I know tonight we're talking about the study. One of the things that's so exciting about this proposed engagement study is that it gives youth a real voice in how the center is built. The same young people who will go there and spend time there after school and during summers, sitting down to actually listen to what they need and want and let them help create the space along with parents and school staff and neighbors. Taking the time now to be truly intentional will be so beneficial as planning continues and will likely provide invaluable insights that can be used in other ways as well. That's why I'm asking the council to vote yes tonight to invest in making the teen center the best space it can be.
All right, and I also have four emails that were sent to the council. The first one is from Deborah Goose Caffrey. Sorry, I butchered your last name, I'm sure. And she said, I support resolution R one oh five twenty one. Also Franny Lyons from Pittsburgh. Hello, I'm a Pittsburgh resident writing in support of resolution R one oh five twenty one to redirect Pittsburgh fund money to the teen center study. We need to hear directly from the community in order to serve the community. Let's not leave families behind because politicians would prefer to hoard money for some white pleasing ideals. Also Shelley Malofsky from Pittsburgh. I'm writing in support of the resolution to redirect unspent grant funding from the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative to the study for the teen center. I believe the teen center will be a valuable asset for the Pittsburgh community. Therefore, anything that advances that reality will be a benefit. The H and I anticipated anticipated meeting just the kind of needs that the teen center will help to fulfill the transfer of funds is a logical use of the grant money. And then Micah Ledusa from Pittsburgh. I'd like to lend my support to this amendment. I support both the teen center as well as the study as the council has deemed it necessary in order to start the process of getting this project off the ground. This is exactly the kind of project we need to be promoting to create the kind of healthy communities we want in Pittsburgh. This money in the Healthy Neighborhood Fund is allocated for this specific purpose, to support youth programming within this specific neighborhood. This amendment asks to use that money for the programming for which it is intended. If we do not allocate it here, as I understand, it will just sit for the time being, waiting for future grant requests. What concerns me is what I see about to happen tonight is what happened last time. I'm guessing there is going to be a wide variety of Pittsburgh citizens passionately supporting this amendment here tonight, reflecting what is clearly overwhelming in support in the community. There's also majority council support, but the council failed to get two thirds because of process issues. This amendment should be evaluated on its merits, not each individual alder's interpretation of how they think it should be presented to council. This is a proposal crafted for the community, supported by the community, and again, I will note, supported by a majority of alders in the previous council that might fail again, not because of the idea itself, but the process by which it is presented, which is extremely disheartening for the people trying to do positive things for this community. In closing, I ask again to evaluate this amendment on its merits and the good it will bring to the community you serve, and let's move this project along. All right, so that's what I have for the public. Joe, you want to speak next? Go ahead.
Sure, yep. Excuse me all, if I'm spotty or if you hear background noise, I'm traveling for work and I'm staying in Milwaukee this evening because I couldn't get back to Pittsburgh on time. So before I kind of go into more detail, I do want to call on Misty just to inquire how much has been raised privately and paid to the city.
Go ahead, Misty.
So as identified in the resolution, there's the three thousand dollars that was collected through United Way for the Pittsburgh Fund, and this resolution proposes redirecting those donations, that are private donations, to the teen center study. In addition, as of this morning, we collected one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars worth of donations, and I hear that there's another two hundred dollar check in the box as of now, but I haven't seen it or cashed it yet. So it's a total between those kind of three numbers, four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars has been collected.
So the next thing I would like to do is ask Wade Thompson to address a couple of things. One, Wade, if you can speak to the H and I committee process, and if you could also speak to the work that's been done to kind of develop an RFP. Can I ask you a little bit later about another question I have after some discussion?
Sure, and maybe first off, for those council members that I haven't met yet, I'm Wade Thompson, excuse me, with the city's planning department. So, yeah, just to kind of give some context to the council. So this resolution does have its origins in a recommendation from the H and I committee, which I believe was last December of 2020. I do serve as staff liaison to that committee. I think that I don't want to speak for the committee, but I think their general intent with this recommendation was to, again, redirect funds to fully fund the teen center study. And I think the rationale for that was understanding what the Pittsburgh Fund was all about. And what the Pittsburgh Fund was all about, and I can say this comfortably as I was the the primary author of the fund concept, was to encourage the idea of equity in youth education in the Verona Road West neighborhood. Now, the Pittsburgh Fund was essentially a pilot concept. We had never done anything like this before. The idea was to basically put out an RFP to encourage services for for youth and equity in youth education. So we're starting down that path. The teen center concept came up while we were going down that path. And then the committee made a decision that since we hadn't yet fully implemented the Pittsburgh Fund, let's explore redirecting the funds to the teen center study. I think in the committee's mind, the teen center study still does get to that core issue of youth equity and youth education. So again, I think as staff liaison to that committee, generally I find it good practice to be in agreement with my committees. In this case, I fully am in agreement with that committee. I think this is a good use of the funds. Certainly, you know, I think the discussion now is at what level should the study take place? But again, from the committee's perspective, from staff liaison's perspective, certainly I think this this would be a good use of of those funds. To the second point, again, in preparing for tonight and months on out, I have prepared an RFP for the teen center study. So if and when the teen center study is ready to roll, we will have an RFP ready to roll out. And I envision that as, you know, a fairly seamless process. So I guess in wrapping up, staff is ready to roll with whatever the council directs us to do.
Do you have more, Joe?
Not for now.
All right. Anyone else? I'm sure someone has something to say. Jim, go ahead, Jim.
Okay, let me first start off by saying I understand a lot of things that go on in the community. I was a police officer for twenty eight years, nearly twenty eight years. So I see desperation, and I've seen stuff that I wouldn't want to describe to anyone in this room. I have put my life on the line, so I don't need people to tell me how important this is because I know it's very important, and I wanted to succeed. But as I watched this budget process, it has raised some red flags. Okay, and one is that the budget process takes months to actually put together. Okay, then it's adopted by the council, and that's the expectation that that's what we're going to follow. There have been, you know, some red flags as I watched the budget discussions where promises have been made to raise lots of money, and basically, promise wasn't kept. So I understand things could go wrong. I've been in law enforcement, done budgets on the management team, and things can go where you don't want them to go, and you may have to come back for a, you know, a budget amendment. That takes two thirds. That takes two-thirds. Well, after that, you know, I'm on the council for two meetings, and next thing you know, this is coming back again. And that really disturbed me, and I'll tell you why it disturbed me. A couple of years ago, there was a project that was supposed to go on Fish Hat Tree Road. Okay, it went back and forth between the planning commission and the council and everything else like that. And then all of a sudden, it was denied. Well, then all of a sudden, the council decided, hey, let's put it back on. And so they did, and all of a sudden, it was approved. Well, I was sitting on the other side of this bench here, and I was in the room. And all of us basically said, "What just happened here? How come the public wasn't given an opportunity to basically respond?" Well, it took a lawsuit in order to correct the situation, which the city had to pay over $37,000 for. Insurance covered the rest, but it lost a lot of trust because of that. And it was one thing that Judge Stephen Elkie said in his decision was that, and this was something totally different with why it was, you know, not put forth. It was because of notice, so the decision was moved with the city council did. But he said something about process. And when the citizens of this city sees a process and thinks that it's done, it should be done. And if you don't, it really erodes legitimacy of this council. And that's what's the way I was feeling. What is this council doing? So again, now here we are tonight. You know, it's already been denied once, you know, came back, fine. But then you bring it back again because, hey, we got new people, you know, on the council. And what is it, three people? Maybe we could convince them to change the decision. Well, that's all well and good, yeah, you can do it. It's been noticed and everything else like that. But I look at it as just because you can do it doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. And being in law enforcement, the Supreme Court, Wisconsin state law, this is wide latitude to do a lot of things. And young officers would say, hey, why can't we do this? I'm like, yeah, you can do it, but it's not the right thing to do because it undermines trust in the community. So yeah, we could talk, you know, and say, hey, let's do it. But I wasn't part of the budget discussions. I didn't have my input because actually I would have did something differently. And Joe knows that because we talked about it. Because I wanted to succeed. And the way you succeed, you have good planning, and you're very transparent to the community, and you let them decide. It doesn't take calling the community names and all that other kind of stuff because they're good people here in this community. So people may not agree with me, this is my own personal beliefs, my own personal values that we need to build trust, and we can go forward, but how much trust are you losing by bringing this back the way it has come back? I'll leave it at that.
Jay, go ahead.
Jim, you've brought up some good points, and I want to address a couple of them before I make some comments. The first one is about the process. This is part of our process. It is amending the budget is a part of our process. It happens from time to time. It doesn't happen often, but every once in a while, it happens when there is a pressing need. Now, I'm one of the new alders, and I didn't need any convincing on this. I was pushing for a youth center 20 years ago. That's how long this issue has been lingering in this city. We, so up until 1988, Pittsburgh was a township. And there was a Supreme Court decision that said that the township could incorporate. And the reason the township wanted to incorporate into a city was because frankly, they got tired of Madison and Verona and other places annexing pieces of the township of Pittsburgh and losing tax base that was part of the township. But one of the responsibilities of that incorporation is there's stuff you have to do as a city that you don't have to do as a township. So we've been in the process of doing a lot of those things. Now, in Wisconsin, which makes Wisconsin a little different than a lot of other states, in Wisconsin, school districts are not linked to municipal borders. So as all of you, I'm sure, know, Pittsburgh is divided into three school districts. Sometimes you can partner with a school district to do certain things. But that's difficult in our arrangement because we have three different school districts to contend with, and that's part of the challenge that we have had in trying to provide these youth services over the years that I've been involved in Pittsburgh politics. I still am just astounded that we're sitting here tonight talking about something that should have been done over a decade ago, and yet it still sits here and lingers as something that we just can't do because of whatever reason. So this doesn't approve, just so everyone's clear, this doesn't approve building a youth center. This is to do a study, this is to get public input, this is to talk to the people who might be the potential users of such a center to find out what kind of things that would be helpful for them. What do they need? What do they need to make this a better community? What do they need to make their neighborhoods better? To help them become more productive? To help them become the members of society that I think we want everybody to be? Dave, in your district, you lost bookmobile services 10 or 12 years ago when the Pittsburgh Library got built. That was a resource that was not just in Dave's neighborhood, but also in part of my district, up in the Post Road area. Those services that were being provided to residents are just gone, and nothing has replaced them for 10 years. I think it is well past time to make this happen. Now, you know, and you can even look around Dane County. And I just did a quick little survey today. Sun Prairie, Oregon, Middleton, Mount Horup, all of these cities and villages that we are out here in the marketplace with have a youth center. They provide these services for the children of their communities, and we ought to also. And you know what? There may be process things that are unpleasant for you, but we're here to make these kinds of decisions, and this is part of our process. This is actually a legitimate process that we've gone through. There's a lot of people who support this, and I think this ought to pass tonight with a two-thirds vote, and I hope that it will.
I have Julia next, then Gabriella.
Thank you, Mayor. So I am one of the co-sponsors of this resolution, and I have been very involved from the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative since day one. And I understand the needs in each of these neighborhoods. And when we decided to launch the Pittsburgh pilot program with United Way was specifically to work in that area in youth program. We have money that is not spent in the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative that is already money approved in 2019 budget by the council. It's sitting there that aligns, you know, we can allocate these funds with the goals to youth program, and this is one of the reasons that I think that we need to utilize that money in this study. When you talk about transparency, Jim, you mentioned about transparency. We are going to do an study, transparency. We are going to involve all the stakeholders in the city, especially in that area, to determine what are the needs, what are the programs, how we're going to do it, who are going to be involved in that. You talk about that we are changing the process, we are talking about timing. This is what we brought, we bring this forward again. It's not about speculation of a new council or anything like that. It's about timing. We need to move forward this summer with this RFP. It's ready to go. We are talking about $10,000 for good sake. Today, you guys in the finance committee approve, I don't know how many amendments, that it were more than a million dollars for construction, for burning cable from M G N E, from creating an additional shed in golf course. And we're talking about $10,000. $10,000 they're already allocating, approved in the budget. I am asking, you need, please consider this. This is something great for the city. We are not building the community center right now. We are doing a study that is going to cost $40,000, and we need $10,000 to move from that unspent fund. That's it. And then... That's it for now.
Alright, I've got Gabriella, and then Jim after that.
So I think there's one thing that was said a little bit in the public comments, but I think needs to be reiterated in that, you know, the pandemic has widened the opportunity gap for a lot of kids. And this project now is more important than it was even a year ago. And so I think it's really important that speed is important in this situation. I think we need to do the study this year, and, you know, Wade said, "The RFP is ready to go." If we approve this tonight, it goes out and we're going to get it done, and we're going to find out more details about what the community needs, and we can move forward on a project. And I guess I see it a little bit differently than Alder Wheeler because I think actually what's going to erode trust in the community is if we don't pass this. Because the community, you know, during the CIP when this project first came up, first considered, you know, there were 75 people that came out and spoke for it. We sat here for two and a half hours and listened, which I know was like, for some people, was kind of grueling. But like, I was here and I was just like, holy cow, I have never seen anything like this before. Like, it was wonderful. And what's interesting about this process is we looked at this a couple of weeks, or like a month ago, and I don't think the council was anywhere close to, the final decision wasn't aligned with what the public wanted. And what happened was it came back, and there were way more comments today than there were in the past. And I think because people realize that this is our opportunity to get this done quickly so that we know what's possible. And obviously, the building's not going to be built yet. There's a lot more to go through before that, but the speed matters. And then this amount of money, like Alder Redford said, it's a very small amount of money, you know, all things considered. And it's literally like earmarked for equity and youth education. I think this is a perfectly acceptable move for the council to make. I think it's what the community clearly wants. We've had all of these outpouring of support. I have seen nobody saying that we shouldn't do this study. Everyone, top down, said the study is an important first step. And now is important. It needs to go out to RFP tomorrow because it can't wait. The pandemic has made things worse, and we can't wait.
I've got Jim, and then Dave after that, and then Joe after that.
Well, it is kind of nice to be lectured by people who don't look like me, but as far as I'm concerned, you know, you can talk about my values all you want to. They're my values, okay? And nobody is going to make me change my values, no matter how much you lecture me, okay? As a police officer, I had values on the street, okay? I didn't do what everybody wanted me to do because I didn't think it was right. Okay, I can go and say, oh, well, the goal is to get drugs off the street. Why don't we just go do it? But no, I had to stand for my values. I just wanted to get that straight, that you could say I should just, you know, kind of forget about those. But no, I'm not going to forget about my values, especially coming from someone who don't look like me.
Alright, Dave, and then Joe after that.
I've, you know, I've heard many of you say, and Jay talked about it, you know, since 2010. I've lived in that neighborhood, I'm at ground zero. I'm a block away from where, you know, I've lived there 33 years. I have a pretty good handle on what's going on, and I'm on record of being in favor of the teen center. I am, you can look it up, I'm on record. But the caveat has always been, we need a large component, you know, of donated money, okay? We need people to step up and pledge. And previously, you know, this was before I was on the council, I was told that supporters were going to come up with $10,000. Well, we don't, I don't see that, you know, in the Catholic Diocese of Madison. If a parish wants to do any project, the bishop doesn't approve it until the parishioners have signed the checks. Okay, that's the way it works. And I'm concerned about precedent here. Move ahead, and then all of a sudden, the volunteer component, the donation component of this is going to be gone, and everyone, oh yeah, we're going to build this, and the city taxpayers fund the whole thing and the operating expenses, everything moving on. I'm in favor of it, but people need, you know, the supporters need to get, you know, write a check. I will write a check, you know, I'll write you a check tonight. But I'm not in favor, you know, you get the $10,000 that was promised, and I'll vote for this. A couple other things, though. You know, again, I live on that neighborhood. My children went to school with poor kids that lived down the street. You know, our family took some of them in, helped them in over the years. I'm, you know, I'm committed to action and doing positive things. But we hear about the school and the equity. Well, look what's going on in the Verona School District. We have a new superintendent, and his whole, the first thing he does is he forms a task force on equity and justice. And so I hate to duplicate efforts, you know. I'm concerned this puts us, without getting the money, you know, people writing the checks, it puts us on a path, path to taxpayers being on the hook for the whole thing. Jay, you brought up, you know, we lost the bookmobile. Well, I would add, you voted for that library, I was against it. I knew that was going to happen, you know, I didn't feel our neighborhood would get much out of it. I'm not blaming you, but that was the cause and effect. Some of you have said, you know, we have nothing in the neighborhood. Well, we have a very vibrant Boys and Girls Club. It's across, you know, it's a little inaccessible, but there is a Boys and Girls Club. We have a Catholic multicultural center. You know, the school district has a great outreach, you know, there's many, there's many things going on. I'm still in favor of the youth center, but we need more people to step up and make financial commitments to this. And the same on this study. I'm for the study, but come up with the money you said you were going to, and then I'll vote for it. That's all I've got to say.
Joe will go ahead, and then Jay after that.
Can I share a screen? Okay. Alright, I'll just let you all know a little bit about what I do nine to five. I work for the University of Wisconsin Extension. I'm the program manager for Community and Youth Development. One aspect of that work is positive youth development. So positive youth development, you know, essentially is a theory and a practice that puts young people in the driver's seat at the table for decision-making. I won't read this entire webpage, but it is from the federal government, youth.gov. 21 different federal departments and agencies that support youth created this definition, and this is the definition that myself, as well as colleagues throughout the state of Wisconsin, use in their practice. I was just in Racine County at their county board meeting where they have a youth and governance program, where young people sit on the county boards, not only learn about how local government works, but also contribute to that decision-making process. One section, that PYD is an intentional pro-social approach that engages youth within their communities, schools, organizations, peer groups, and families in a matter that is productive and constructive, recognizes, utilizes, and enhances young people's strength and promotes positive outcomes for young people by providing opportunities, fostering positive relationships, and furnishing the support needed to build on their leadership strengths. Set-based approach, meaning we're not seeing young people as, you know, deficit. We're not seeing young people as a problem to solve, but we are actually seeing young people as a part of the solution. So, you know, when I ran for this seat, the thing that I said very clearly was that we need to invest in youth and families. By investing in young people, we're investing in ourselves. By investing in young people, we're investing in the communities around you. By investing in young people, we're investing in the communities around you. Dave, you know, thank you for your comment and also thank you for your support. I, I really appreciate having worked with you on, you know, several issues since you've, you know, been in office, whether it be, you know, speeding, whether it be community garden in Jamestown Eagle. And also I, I do acknowledge, yes, that there is programming in all of those places, including Jamestown Eagle Park. But I will say this, this study is an opportunity to talk to and engage those who are most impacted. And it's something that we need to make an investment in. There's been some funds raised. Some of that has been, you know, recently through private donations, almost $2,000. And another 3,000 has been money from United Way, which is a, you know, a nonprofit organization that's been raising money from Pittsburgh businesses. And United Way staff did agree to that, to those funds being used for that purpose. So, so neither of those things are taxpayer dollars. With that being said, I would like to make an amendment to the resolution. And I would like to bring Wade again. I have been having conversations with Wade, along with other city staff about some, you know, potential ways to adjust. And one of those ways is, you know, potentially through supplementing the, you know, size of a smaller study with staff, our staff time. So I'd, I'd like to ask Wade just to talk a little bit about that, you know, potential option.
Yeah, again, as bigger picture, H and I initiatives and, and goals. If I need to donate staff time to get a, a strategic effort to engage this neighborhood, I'm more than happy to do that. Certainly we needed, we would need to discuss at what level, you know, planning department would be committed. But bigger picture, again, if, if it's a matter of, you know, if we're talking dollars and if a certain amount of dollars means a study won't happen, certainly I, as, as a planner for this city, I'm, I'm happy to step up and, and help out and fill in the gaps with internal staff time. So, and I can flesh it out more or, or answer questions if need be.
So with that being said, Wade and I have discussed, you know, what an RFP would involve. I also did some, you know, conversations with folks who do this type of community engagement work to just understand the scope of what a study would involve. So, you know, at $40,000, a study would likely engage between 150 to 200 young people. It would also engage families as well as stakeholders in the community, some of the folks that Dave mentioned, like schools, you know, law enforcement, neighborhood residents, as well as youth-serving organizations. And, you know, at $30,000, obviously a study would have to be slightly amended to be able to engage less people. I think that, that data is still valuable and that data will still be important and relevant. Again, it's, it's urgent to what Alder Gearhart mentioned. You know, it should happen this year. It should happen this summer while it's warm, while we can do things outside. Involve our schools. It should involve our, our partner organizations that work directly in the neighborhood. So I would like to make an amendment. I think that Misty may need to help me a little bit on the language of the amendment. But essentially the amendment would be to move forward with the study at the level of $29,000, $29,950. So that $29,950 would include the 3,000 privately donated through United Way. It would include the $1,950 privately raised as of today. It would include the $25,000 that the council has committed in the budget to this study. And it would accept additional donations to increase the capacity of the study as they, as they come in. And supplement the remain through the participation of staff in the planning department, planning and zoning department. Misty, did I get that right?
I think ultimately what you're doing is you're taking out, I'm sorry, Erin, I should have.
Yeah, go ahead, Misty. Go ahead.
Yeah, so ultimately you're just trying, you're taking out the budget amendment piece of it. So you're, you're using just the funding that exists. Whatever amount is not raised as private donations would not be spent on the study. So you would essentially be on the resolution, just striking that last, be it for the resolved clause. You'd still be determining that the 3,000 can be redirected. And then that would be it.
So to, to clarify, apart from the $25,000 that the council has already approved to, to use for this study, the remainder of the funds that would contribute towards this study have all been private dollars. So if I correctly, that would not need a budget amendment. Misty, so, so essentially what I'm understanding is that instead of the $40,000 study, we're going to use the money already raised, including the council donation of roughly $30,000 and do the study at that level instead of 40,000. Misty, does that mean that we still need two thirds or is it simple majority then?
There's no longer a budget amendment associated with it. You're taking donated money and redirecting it to another donated purpose within the confines of what they authorize. So the no, no budget amendment required, which means it affects a simple majority. And just if I may, I'd like to make it clear, because Joe, you mentioned that we'd continue to collect donations. We can only sign a contract up to the amount that we have received in donations. So we can't count on those future donations coming. So I, I think we're on the same page, but just want to make sure that that's clear.
Okay. And to clarify, you know, either Wade or Misty, how long would it take to, you know, between now when it's approved, to put out the RFP and then, you know, reasonably get potential vendors, service providers and then sign the contract?
Before we get into that, so you've made a amendment.
Second.
All right, saying goodbye Gabriella. All right. Thank you. All right, go ahead.
Yeah, so the, the question stands.
Misty.
It'd be Wade.
Yeah, I guess just from, just from an RFP perspective, you know, we could get that out in the next couple of weeks, assuming approval at some level. We'd probably want to keep the RFP open for, let's say, three weeks. So that's about a month. We need some time to review the proposals in another couple of weeks. I'd say two to three months, you know? That, that's probably optimistic to get somebody signed in on board, but that, that could be reasonable. I'd say three to four months.
So that, it, it, kind of after you said what you, I think reemphasizes the urgency, particularly when we think about COVID-19 guidelines that, that we like in place. Being able to do this while it's relatively warm would allow our opportunities to, you know, for engagement to take place, you know, in person, potentially in indoor settings and outdoor setting. I think it would allow our ability to, to be able to, you know, conduct this study in a high quality way and include a lot of people.
All right, so now we're technically discussing the amendment, but I still have a couple of people. I'll ask Jay, do you want to speak now still or do you want to wait?
At this juncture, I'll wait till we get back to the main motion.
All right. Julia, do you want to speak to the amendment at all?
I support the amendment.
All right. Any other comments on the amendment? Randy, go ahead.
Joe, you, you've had my support all along and this is what I've preached as far as, I've always called it a business case and analysis and it's a great project and we've heard all of that this evening. And you're still going to get my support, but I will tell you, you sure know how to move a gold post. Last year I talked to you, there was $100,000, then we took it down to 50,000, then we took it to 40,000 and now we're down to 29,000, whatever it is. You know, there's a level of frustration here. You will have my support, but you know, one has to begin to wonder. I mean, what are we getting for 29,000 when it started at? And I've talked to you and it was $100,000. It was a phase one and a phase two. I don't know, I think I better step back here for a few minutes. I mean, I just have never seen some dollars that are just so fluid. And I'm curious as what we're going to get from 29,000 when just last week you put this on the schedule and now we're on the agenda and the goalpost moved this evening. So I'll let others speak.
All right, I've got Jim and then Joe.
And don't get me wrong, one of the things that I have concern about this project is that I've been around a long time and I've seen people come up with these projects and everything and how great they're going to be. And then all of a sudden they fail because of not proper planning. Let's talk about affordable housing on Tree Lane. Oh, it's great, you know, we got the money. It's needed. Yeah, let's go. It gets built and all of a sudden it turns into the most police calls in that area than the entire West District. And that's been my life as a person of color. We got the answer. Yeah, we got the answer. And the thing about Tree Lane, now everything's good now. But what happened? Not proper planning. And so what happens to affordable, affordable housing takes the hit. The people who planned it, they don't come and say, hey, that was my fault. So now when I'm discussing affordable housing, automatically you got, get people out of this, um, disbelief that affordable housing is bad. Because all the time we've got to rush, rush, rush. And I want this to succeed. Because what happens if it doesn't succeed? Again, I told you so. And it all comes back to planning. That's it.
All right, I've got Joe and then Dave after that. And Julia.
A couple of things. Randy, I share your frustration. You know, unfortunately, the, the reductions that have been made have, you know, been due to circumstances. You know, I did put this in the C I P. It did get approved through that method. And when, you know, we moved to the point where I had to put in a budget amendment for it, for the 2021 budget, you know, the amount that we had was limited. In the kind of conversations that we had leading up to the, to the budget, prior, prior to the actual budget meeting, it was very clear from, you know, members of the council that, you know, there wasn't the money to be able to do a study. At, you know, we have less funds than that. I, I, it's, this isn't the ideal. This isn't the amount that I think would be ideal to be able to do this based on the conversations I've had with, you know, with folks who do community engagement work. But this is where we are. And I would like to be able to proceed at least with this. I thank you for your support. You know, I thank you for your votes in the past. You know, but, but I think, you know, again, to Alder Gearhart's point, you know, there is a sense of urgency based on kind of where we were at, where we are at, particularly coming out of this pandemic. You know, Alder Wheeler, I, I hear you. You know, on Tree Lane, I hear you on, on other things that I've seen in this community. However, this is planning. This, this study would be planning. And you heard from somebody in the planning department, Planning and Zoning, who, who, who has clearly done the pre-planning to the planning. And, you know, I would like to, us to, to at least take one step in the direction of moving forward towards getting the information that the council last year said that that was important for this study.
All right, I've got Dave and then Julia after that.
Joe, you know, I don't, I don't want you to cut the amount in the study. I want a good study, you know, that I, I'm not questioning that. I, but I want the supporters, you know, and I, I'll write a check, I'm a supporter too. I want that money in the bank as a show of good faith that the people are behind this and we're going to get donated money for this. You know, we decide to go ahead, that it's not going to be the taxpayers on the, on the hook for the entire thing and future funding and everything. And I, I think we set the precedent. Get the, get the additional 5,000 and you have my, you have my vote, okay? That's what I'm saying. But I, don't, don't make the study, get a good study so that, you know, we can, we can evaluate it accurately. If you need help doing the study, I'm down, talking to people there all the time, I can help with it. But, you know, come up with what, what we said we were going to get in donations here and then let's move ahead. You know, until that, I, I, I can't support it here.
Julia?
Yeah, so I want to make a clarification to Jim, to Dave about, this is studies about preparing, planning. We are not rushing. We don't even know when we're going to build the community, the teen center yet, you know? So we are talking about, this is the first step moving forward to that. So, and my question to Jim is what will you do differently about this?
I'm glad you asked. One.
Go ahead, Jim. All right, yeah, go ahead. I'm in control here, I'll tell you one, you can go. No, go ahead, Jim.
And, and Joe and I talked, I mean, we talked about it. I just, I think from the beginning of this, when things were starting to, you know, go back and forth, my concern was whether it was going to work. That was one concern. And we kept going, I mean, they kept going back and forth. And then, you know, even tonight, you know, I have a headache because again, you know, I wasn't part of the original study, um, Budget Talks. But now it looks like we're horse trading during the, during the meeting. So that's what I'm talking about, planning. Now, what I would have done differently, and you can see that, you know, you look on the internet, you know? People have been working on this for a long time. That's what I hear. Why couldn't you just get the kids together without having to spend money? And just say, hey, kids, this is what we need to do to move along. Now, think how powerful that is. And there is even one teen study that, um, teen center that started where the kids actually presented to the council. And I thought Pernice Clifton had a good idea. I mean, yes, we do need, we do need data. But let's, let's start at grassroots, move it along, bring the community along with it. I mean, I hear that, yeah, we got all these people who support, okay? I want to be part of that people who's going to get my district behind this. Okay, but they're going to be asking me these same questions. And I got to give them an answer. And the answer I want to give them is that this is important. But I can't, you know, I'm a process type person and I'm sorry about that. For 13 years, I was on a management team in the Madison Police Department. We did budgeting every single year. We put things on a SIP. But it all started with ideas that we have within and we didn't know exactly what we were going to do. But at least we thought it through. And then when something came up, circumstances came up, it was just like, oh my God, I got this plan already. I can move on this. But it almost kind of been vetted, talking to different people, hey, what do you think about this? And those are, those are my concerns. I mean, that's part of my concerns with this whole process. We got the community really excited about this. And I think the community thinks that once this study is done, we're just going to build it next year. And I think those expectations need to be tamped down because unmet expectations leads to what? Frustration and lack of trust in government.
I have Joe and then Julia. One thing before Joe, you go, and I just wanted to mention too, based off of what Jim just said. You know, a couple of weeks ago I said, you know, it helps if you ask me about stuff, I can give you information. One thing that I do think is important to know is as we started the budget process in the very early stages and talking to Misty about the budget, I can tell you that what's really scary to me is that she is going to recommend doing some structural deficits in this year's budget. And if you've been around for the new people, that should send huge warning signs off that our budget is in rough shape. Because the first thing Misty always says is, don't ever do a structural deficit. It, it's a horrible idea, it's a horrible strategy. And so just kind of a heads up that, you know, we talk about the expectations. It's, the study can happen and that this is good information, but it's going to be a long time before, especially if this doesn't jump ahead of Hub Phase Two, just the last, next two years especially, not, nothing's going to happen for Hub or this. And so just, I guess, something I just want people.
And so, just I guess something I just want people to be aware of is that the budget is in a really rough shape, and Misty's actually gonna recommend doing something that she always says, don't ever do this. So just kind of something that's keeping me up at night and just wanna make sure people are aware of, because I think that expectation thing is a big piece, which I think I'm hearing from people too, is that they're concerned that as soon as we do the study, people are gonna think it's gonna be, get built right away. And the reality is, is that, from what I'm hearing, it's gonna be really tough in the next few years. So, I've got, uh, Julia, and then Dave.
Yeah, regarding the budget.
Oh, sorry, Joe, sorry, I'm sorry, Joe first, and then Julia, and then Dave.
Um, so a couple things. One, in CIP, I believe the, uh, actual, um, kind of site, and I could be wrong, I don't have it in front of me, but, um, was not scheduled for twenty-twenty-two, so, uh, you know, it's, it's in that document that, that it won't be built right away. Um, so I just, I just wanted to be really clear on that. And I think, um, you know, another thing to consider is that in the same way the Hub, you know, had multiple years of engagement, of planning, of development, um, that, that there is, you know, I know, there are items in the current CIP, um, to, to build, to be built in for, um, community engagement and design. So, um, I just wanted to clarify that piece. Uh, I was gonna say something, but I, I'll, I'll hold it for now.
Uh, Julia?
Oh, I forgot, um, but I wanna say something before, um, uh, regarding the budget, we also need to consider what we're gonna do with the three million dollar that we are gonna get from the relief too. So, you know, so the city is getting some relief money that we need to discuss as a council in the future, what we're gonna do with that, how we're gonna use it. So, um, I forgot what I was planning to say, you know? Sorry, it's gonna come.
That's all right. Uh, Dave, and then Gabriella.
Um, I just, you know, we're gonna do, we'll do a study. I think it's a foregone conclusion that we're gonna build, build a youth center. We have buildings, we might be able to lease space for a fraction of the cost. I, I, I think it's a, a mistake to just, we're gonna do a study, so that means we're gonna build a, we're gonna build a center. We might be able to lease space for a fraction of that and, and do everything we want at a much lower cost. The other thing I think we need to consider, the Boys and Girls Club proposed a trades, a trade center. And I'm hoping, Michael, you know, we'll wanna locate that in Pittsburgh, you know, near in my district. Well, if that happens, there's kind of a duplication here, you know? I, I think the trades, I think we probably would all agree a trade center, uh, you know, the, I forget her name that talked about, you know, about additional school. Well, that's, that's it, and they're getting, they're getting training that's going to help them get a job and a, and a career. So I, I don't think it's a foregone conclusion that we're going to, to build, build a facility, you know, that's gonna be two and a quarter million dollars, we might lease, or it might, the need might go away with another facility. I just wanna, wanna raise that specter.
And I can tell you that, uh, I believe this is out there, that they are closing on a month on a building, the Boys and Girls Club belonging to Verona Road Corridor. Uh, Gabriella, and then Jay, and then Julia.
Uh, I just wanna thank you, Council, this has been a great conversation, and I, my thinking has evolved a little bit. I, I guess there's two things I wanna say. Now, the first one is that, you know, I talked about the urgency, and I, I, I really take your point to heart about Ms. Alder Wheeler, about when we talk about that, it does sound like we're gonna do it next year, and that's prob, that's not in the cards, most likely. So I get that, and so I, I respect that, and I think that that's an important point to make. Um, so I guess I, I guess it's interesting, because I, I do think it's urgent, and we probably aren't gonna be, be able to build it for a little while. But I guess my question then I posed to the council is, is it important to do it this year so that we know what the needs are? We can decide if it's something that's needed or not, and if it is needed, what it looks like? And then we can properly put it in the CIP and like figure out what it might cost, go forward. So I guess like, I was talking about urgency, and like, maybe that was the wrong way to frame it. Like, I appreciate, like, maybe, maybe it's urgent in the fact that we should, we should get it done this year so that we can put it into a future planning phase and like know how we're gonna approach this going forward. Um, so my thinking has evolved a little bit on that, and I, I, I think that that's an important point. The other thing I'll say is, like, I would love for there to be lots of donations and community support in that way. I, I will just say that, you know, I, I've done my best to get the word out, but you know, I, we're just, this is a part-time job, and Joe works full-time, I work full-time, like, I, I, I donated myself, um, and I was happy to do that. But it's like, I only can do so much in terms of fundraising, and it's difficult to fundraise, and right now it's tough because of, because of the pandemic, people are, um, their budget is a little bit tighter than it was before. So although I think, you know, the spirit of additional community funding is great, I just think there's some realities in terms of the difficulty of fundraising for something like this. Um, and it's one of the reasons that I'd like to move forward. But it sounds like there's, I'd be interested to hear about, would, do people, do, do you all wanna wait until next year to do the study? Because, I mean, that's an important thing to know, because if that's true, then of course we could raise more money in the meantime. But I guess my, right now, what I'm thinking is I would rather move forward sooner rather than later so that we can properly plan, get it into the CIP, and like really know what we're looking at, so that maybe we can say, like, say, oh, this is gonna be three years down the road, five years down the road. So I'm curious if people have response to that.
I've got Jay and then Julia after that.
So, um, first of all, Dave, the city of Pittsburgh taxpayers aren't gonna be quote-unquote "on the hook" for some deficit. As Misty pointed out, whatever gets approved, that's all that can be spent unless there's other private donations that come in. So it's not like, it's not like we're creating a contractual deficit that the taxpayers will be on the hook for. That's not what's being proposed. Um, and even if there were a budget shortfall, in order, i- if, if there were a shortfall in funding for the, the study, it would have to come back to this council again, because this wouldn't do it. It would have to come back to this council again to make up the difference if the council chose to do such a thing at that time. So, um, I mean, that, uh, the process is rather laborious, and, uh, you know, you can't just suck money out and spend it, um, without, without going through this process again. Jim, I, I'm not sure why you feel I was attacking your values, because that wasn't, I didn't say anything about that as far as what I could tell. But, um, this particular thing is the beginning of the community engagement process. So, uh, you know, I know there's projects out there, and we've had them come to us. In fact, you know, not this eight people sitting here, but this council has rejected proposals that have come to us by youth in this community. There was a skateboard park that kids went out there and they did some fundraising for it. This was fifteen, twenty years ago. Do you remember when it was, Mike? The skateboard park? Yeah, and they had gone out and raised some money, and they were talking about other things they were gonna go do to raise the money. All they needed was eight thousand dollars from this council, and the council in its wisdom said no. We had a guy, uh, maybe twenty years ago or so, I forget his name, but he was trying to build the swimming pool in Pittsburgh. And he was gonna raise all of the money for that privately, and this council in its wisdom said no. It's really easy to sit up here and say no, but that's not what leadership is. Leadership is saying, you know what, this is a good idea, let's do it. And you're right, Jim, th- this isn't gonna be built for a while, and, and if it's gonna be built at all. We haven't even, we haven't committed to that, but we're saying, let's find out what the community needs. And you know what? Going through this process of community engagement, this isn't gonna be the end of it. There will be, this, this particular study will be the first, and there will probably be additional things that happen in years to come before anything even ends up, uh, in the CIP as a project that we wanna move ahead with. Because that's how these processes work. Government is, government is really irritating to deal with sometimes. Um, but this is a starting point, that's all it is. Now, a- as far as the urgency, there is a sense of urgency, I get it. Um, I also see other pieces of urgency. For example, one of the things that I had proposed back in two thousand eight was when we, when we built a new fire station to take Fire Station Number Two, which is the one that used to be over by the Quick Trip, and convert that into a youth center. I had put, I had, uh, put an amendment in for the capital improvement plan to, to do a study on what it would take to renovate that building and turn it into a youth center. And the council said, nope, and I, as far as I know, I don't even think the city owns that building anymore. So, so, you know, that's something where if, if there had just been a little bit of foresight, we could have saved ourselves a lot of money just by renovating that building instead of thinking about building a new one. And you're right, Dave, maybe there are some buildings out there. There's, there's a lot of vacant space in Pittsburgh right now, and we don't even know right now what type of need for a building would be. We won't know that until we start this community engagement process and start doing these steps, but it all starts with the first step, which we see, we need to be able to do.
I've got Julia, then Joe, and then Jim.
So, uh, it's nine, ten, and we have been talking for more than an hour and a half about ten thousand dollar. Okay, I want to make that. Um, so regarding your question about if we need to lease the place or buy, and I wanna agree with Jay. The studies wanna determine all of that, and maybe we can partner with the new, uh, Boys and Girls Club Trade Center or other organization, the study's gonna determine all of that, so. And I wanna tell you that it's something that I always, I told Joe, uh, last year, when this, uh, this project didn't pass, uh, and budget is sometime, good project, group development, group amenities, take time. I am telling you, I am working with inclusive playgrounds since two thousand eighteen, okay? And I have been working with, uh, with Wade, um, with the Hub from, I don't know, two, three years, you know? So it take time, and we are doing the due diligence, we are doing it. We are taking the time, we are talking to the stakeholders, we're doing the planning, and this study is gonna be the first step to start working about that. People move to cities or to new municipality family because they look at what are the amenities that we provide to them. If all the municipality, we provide the same basic municipality services, how we are gonna compete with other one, what we are offering that other one they offer? So I look at this thing at, with that lens. What, what are all the competitive advantages as a municipality city compared to other ones? And we have a lot of need, you know, um, you know, and, and, and understanding the, the neighborhood where we want to, um, improve, because if we improve one part of the city, we improve the whole city. All of us, we are gonna be better. Um, so, um, so I think it's time to vote for this and move forward.
All right, I've got Joe and then Jim after that. Go ahead, Joe.
Try to be as brief as possible, because staff are on here, and then they eventually wanna go home. Um, so I will say a few things. Um, Alder Herbst, um, they, uh, Michael Johnson actually called me when he was, um, sort of preliminarily, um, getting ready to roll out this trade. Um, I would say it's different, it's complimentary, but it's different, and he acknowledged that as well. So I, how, how do these efforts sort of coincide? And pretty clear to me that those things are different. A trade and tech center is very, um, specific with a very specific set of hard skills, um, that are provided. There are some soft skills that may, you know, um, be included there as well, obviously, some relationship development and building. But ultimately, you're preparing a very specific group of young people for a very specific purpose. And, uh, my understanding is that the trade center wouldn't just necessarily serve that neighborhood, but it would be probably something that's what, um, county-wide or regional, um, so it's different. The, um, this, you know, as other folks have alluded to, would bring in a lot of potential, um, opportunities. Um, youth development, life readiness, um, partnerships with the school district, um, you know, other forms of, um, programming, social, um, uh, uh, kind of, sort of, I, I, no better way to put it than sort of youth voice um, in decision-making processes, um, so, and mental health potentially. So there's a lot of different things it could do that necessarily, uh, trade center wouldn't necessarily. I, I don't, I wouldn't say it's duplicative. Uh, the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club told me that it wouldn't be duplicative, um, but I'm gonna stand on it. Um, the second thing, so we talk about, you know, taxpayer dollars. Um, we as a city have many different meth of, um, collecting data and collecting information and engaging the community. Um, we spend money on it, we spend our tax dollars on it. We have an Anton Drive, we have a comprehensive plan, we have a housing plan, we have, um, many different types of studies for projects that are being built. And, you know, we do use, um, you know, taxpayer dollars, staff time to get those projects done. Why? Because they give us information that we need in order to, um, uh, better our city, better our neighborhoods, um, solve problems and also create opportunities. So, uh, I wanted to, like, put that in perspective, because we've spent a lot of money on a lot of studies over the years to do a lot of different things. This is one thing, and it's a very small thing, but it's important. Um, and then third, I just wanna, uh, you know, talk a little bit about, um, you know, Wade and I have had conversations about this. And I'd just like to invite Wade to, you know, share some of your thinking on what a Phase Two looked like, um, you know, based on our discussion. So if we were to have a second part of this, um, study in future years, what would that, what would that look like? What would that include?
I think we really need to stick to the amendment though, instead of Phase Two of the study. I mean, it's been over an hour, and we need to really stick to the, the amendment, and I think instead of a Phase Two study in the future, if we could.
That's fine, but I just, I is that that conversation has been there, so I'll.
All right, uh, Jim?
And I do agree, Julia, I've been, it's time to get this moving, but what I wanna say is, if this would have started at the beginning, this would have been a different, I think, story than what we're doing now. Remember how this started? We're gonna buy a building, then we're gonna study it, then we're gonna come in, you know, um, get a, a group together to raise money. And that's what I talk about, planning. Now, if this started with, and what I'm hearing, and let me just be clear, is that it's gonna be a study first. That's what I'm hearing. Then it's gonna be a review of the study, and then we're gonna be looking at feasibility, and that this can take maybe years, correct? Is that, is that the understanding? Um, Joe, I mean, I cannot.
Sorry, I couldn't tell if you were looking at me. Um, yes.
Uh, so we got, okay, so it's recorded, that's the understanding. And that's the kind of planning I would have liked to see in the beginning. Because basically what we're doing now was doing what a regular bu- budget discussion is. We're discussing things, getting it out into the open, letting the community actually hear the process. And I like it that we're tamping this down and we're reducing expectations. So I'll just end with that, I won't say anything else tonight.
All right, are we ready to do some voting? Oh, no, okay, Julia, go ahead, yep.
So, Jim, I understand that we made a mistake, we, we recognize that, and we say how we can move forward and, you know, and, and do this the correct way. So we, we not, this is what we, you know, we, it, it happened to us last year, you know? So now we say, okay, and the council say, why we don't, you do the study first and then determine, you know, all the feasibility of this, the, the, if we wanna build it or no, the needs, blah, 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 all the stuff that we discussed. So this is why we are here now, and this is, it's good to have this conversation, this is why we are here. People elect us to make the difficult decision. We are here to make difficult decision, okay? And this is a difficult decision, but this is a good decision. This is how I see it. And we recognize that we made a mistake in the process, and we are trying to fix it now. And this is why we have this discussion, and we say, let's move forward with this study, and let's see what happen. And then maybe in six months, we are gonna have another discussion, and we're gonna say, okay, what is the next step? That's it, this is how I see it.
All right, Jay, go ahead.
One quick comment. Um, city processes, I understand what you're talking about with planning, Jim, and I, I wish everything could be planned out precisely. But government doesn't work that way.
Okay, wait, hold on, let's not go back and forth, you know, this is nerves of people.
Well, uh, you know, all I'm saying is that I've seen, I mean, we may do this, whatever Joe was gonna present for Phase Two, that might not even actually end up being that might not even actually end up being phase two after phase one gets done. Because these processes change. And so you can only plan so far and then you just have to roll with it.
Jim, go ahead.
Like I said, Jay, you don't have to lecture me. I have been in government for over 28 years. I have been on the Madison Police Department management team as a captain. I understand budgeting. So you don't have to lecture me. Thank you.
All right, let's go to vote on the amendment first. And so the amendment is to change the study to roughly $30,000. It's just short of $30,000. Tracy, I'm going to ask for a roll call just because, oh, Misty, do you have a question?
I was going to clarify that ultimately you're striking the budget amendment language. So you're not necessarily talking about a $30,000 study. You're just striking the budget amendment language.
Okay. All right, Tracy, you want to do a roll call? Because I don't know what's going to happen here.
Alder Allen?
Hi.
Alder Radafrada?
Yes.
Alder Dearheart?
Yes.
Alder Herbst? Alder Malvinado?
Hi.
Alder Strassman?
Yes.
Alder Udell?
Yes.
Alder Wheeler?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, one.
All right, so now we have an amended resolution, which no longer has the budget change to it. I did have, you know, Jay, you were on the list before. Do you want to speak anymore to the motion, the roll motion?
I, I think we're pretty much done.
I agree. Julia, you were on that list, too. Do you have anything else? All right, then we'll go ahead and vote. And I, I feel like I don't need to do a roll call now. I'm assuming it's going to be similar to the last vote. All in favor of approving the resolution R 10521, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, the ayes have it. All right. Moving back to the agenda here. Planning Commission, I know we haven't met. Anything you want to add, Randy?
No, there is not.
All right, then we can go to Public Works. Dave?
Let me just get scrolled down here a sec.
All right, I believe the first one we want to postpone indefinitely. There's a few things on the agenda tonight that when we originally had referred out, we had added referring to RCC, but they actually didn't meet. And there are some things that were time-sensitive. And so we ended up directly referring and passing those earlier, which is why we need not just postpone indefinitely these three things because we already approved them.
I can make the motion if, well, is that okay?
Yeah, how about Dave, since he's the Public Works person? Unless he takes another five minutes.
My computer went, my page.
Now he's under pressure, so now it's even harder to find it.
What page are we? That's what I thought.
I'll have Gabrielle do this one, first one for you, Dave.
I moved to postpone indefinitely a resolution R 6721, authorize an increase in stormwater rates.
All right, is there a second to that?
Second.
Shannon, I think. I know there's a lot of people at once.
If I understand correctly, you're, you're saying that this was already approved?
We approved this already, yeah. Yep, yep, exactly. It was approved previously. And RCC, I think, approved it when they discussed it.
Yes, yeah, for all three of these approvals.
All right, so they agreed with our approvals. All right, all in favor of postponing indefinitely, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, that was postponed indefinitely. All right, next one, Dave.
Next, resolution R 6821, approval to purchase street sweeper in 2021. We have a motion to approve.
Signed by Julia, did Public Works approve?
We have a second. Public Works did approve.
Did RCC?
Second on that motion?
Yeah, Julia.
Okay.
Yep, did RCC approve? Oh, she just left. I'll say maybe. Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, and what's this about, Dave?
Well, we, the current street sweeper we have, I believe, I don't know if Bill is still here, was purchased in 2015. Does that sound right, Bill? Yeah. And we are, we are behind in our compliance, getting our streets swept. We've hired an additional person that has, you know, that some of that stormwater increases, additional person. So we, we think a second street sweeper would allow us to get in compliance. I have, I would just throw it out there. I, I asked Misty and Mike and Bill, is it possible we could have one street sweeper and run a second shift to get this done? And I have not gotten, I have not gotten a yea or, yea or nay on that. I, my thought was if we ran a second shift, we could pay that person premium and save, you know, save money and still get our, still get our streets swept. But I didn't, Mike, do you know anything about, can you give me any update on that? We had heard from Mark Hodl regarding that, and I thought you were on that. I might have gone to my Fitchburg email, which I just got working tonight. Can you summarize what?
And Mark had indicated that he had talked to you as well. He said, I don't think the second shift option would work well, a few reasons why. The noise ordinance is from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. I think it may cause issues within departments. It would be taxing on one sweeper, especially an older unit that should be replaced before costly repairs are needed. Spring, summer, fall is when folks plan to use comp time that is accrued during winter months when they are expected to be available 24/7 through November to April. These are just a couple of thoughts. It's really not a matter of just anybody jumping into a sweeper. It takes time to learn the way they operate and to make them work efficiently. An example would be if it was offered to have somebody do payroll at night for a premium pay shift. Everyone would want to do this. The problem is that everyone would not be qualified and it could cause more issues than not. I did some checking. The city of Madison only runs sweeper in the spring cleanup time. During this time, they only sweep areas that are not residential areas. They also use mechanical sweepers that are quiet. These types are not recommended for the stormwater credits. Fitchburg is growing and extra resources will be needed to keep the level of service at a premium level. In the end, I will work with whatever is decided and ensure we will be able to figure something out.
Thank you, Mike. Well, you see, you know, they're not in favor of it. I, I still feel there's, there's merit to that. I would be willing to take the calls from citizens. You know, if we ran a second shift, it would be approximately three to, say, three to nine. People wanted to complain, you know, that we were, we're making a decision, you know, that goes by their house maybe once or twice. You know, a couple of times, you know, that, you know, we have trucks and other things and jets going by. I, I don't feel it'd be that big of a deal. But again, you've, you've heard from the, heard from the department. I just wanted to raise the, raise the issue.
All right, Julia.
My question is, my understanding was that we are buying this because the city is growing and we need extra, an extra one, is that?
Yeah, we have requirements on how often we're supposed to do sweeping on certain streets. And we're not meeting that right now.
Yeah.
And like you heard from the email, we're, by ordinance, we can only run between 7:00 and 7:00, which is one of the concerns staff had with doing another shift. You're not getting the full eight hours extra or something like that. And then you're also putting a lot more stress on the one street sweeper we do have. So I think there's concern there. Do you have further? Keep going.
My question is, can we lease this? If we are using only for the springtime, can we lease those much, you know? I don't know.
I don't have any idea if that's a possibility. Build you, is releasing a street sweeper something that can be done?
I, I think there's programs out there. We currently lease our loader, you know, but I'm not sure what kind of a program. We haven't looked into that. We just know that we do have, you know, the town of Madison coming in and we just put in another, you know, four miles of streets in terravessas. So it's, we're growing and growing and we just, we just need to, you know, plan for the future on this. It's, it's coming. So this is the point that we're, we're choosing to, to get ahead of this and, and, and put that in there. The street sweeper is very noisy. It runs a whole engine at night at howls. It's a, you know, it, it's rated at 83 decibels at, at the house. So it's, it's very noisy and it's about 10 times noisier than, you know, your nighttime noise, ambient noise, you know, at night. So it's, and just given that it's a slow-moving vehicle and windows are open in the summer, it's just not a really good practice to be running them at night. But it's, it's just, we really don't want to try to go down that road. But as Mark had mentioned, you know, if, if this is something that we need to do, we'll do. But with the way we're growing in the town of Madison, we're, we chose this point to, to purchase the sweeper.
Any more, Jay?
I, yeah, just two quick questions. How long does a street sweeper last these days?
What's the spike life, Bill?
Typically, we, we try to run them for 10 years. We're running about $6,000 to $8,000 in maintenance every year. And I think it's probably going to be going up, you know, in the next four years. So this is our first sweeper that we've had, I, I think. I'll have to check and see if we, I think we did have one prior to this, what those maintenance costs were in year six, seven, and eight. But I think we're, we're hitting the point where we're going to start the maintenance cost increasing.
And the, the requirements that we aren't in compliance with, are those from the state? Are those from the county or who's?
Bill, what are, are those state requirements or county?
Yeah, our, our state permit with the, with the DNR requires us to do, to remove so much sediment from our stormwater every year. And our program, the way we've got it modeled, we are reducing our sediment to the, the streams by using that, that vacuumed street sweeper. We're required to do it once a month in order to meet those requirements. If we go out of that, we're technically out of compliance by allowing too much dirt to go into the streams.
Anything else? All right, seeing none, I'll take over to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, that's approved. Next one, Dave?
Next, I'd like to have a motion to approve resolution R 7621, approving contract with EDR for a stormwater flood study near Cheryl Drive, an area that we've continued to have stormwater problems with. Do we have a second?
Second.
Saying about Gabrielle, did Public Works approve?
Public Works did approve.
Did RCC approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, and what's this about, Dave?
Bill, I'll let you, you, Bill was driving around during the storm, actually, and surveying, surveying the issue. And I think it's mostly a capacity, getting water in certain places. But if, if he had the answer, you know, we want to have to have a study, so.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, the, there's about a 200-acre drainage area that comes down into Cheryl Drive, into the, the Key Farms Park in that area, that we've had a, a number of increasing storms or increased number of storms that have high intensity, a lot of rainfall. And when those happen, the, we don't have enough infrastructure in place upstream from there to catch the water and put it into pipes. And the infrastructure that we do have in place there is not large enough to take all of that water in. The consequence of that is at the intersection of Charleston and East Cheryl, and then just to the west of Jacqueline. There's two low points that will flood the street and flood into yards. I don't think it gets into people's houses in those areas, but it does create a hazard for vehicles trying to get through there. The water ponds about two feet deep. So the study would, would look at that entire drainage basin to see how or if we can improve the area to get the stormwater either into the pipes or provide an overflow area into the, into the park and the squalls that are in there, the ponds and stuff downstream. What we're also looking at is to see if the the flooding or the ponding in the street is caused by a backup of the downstream area, the, the ponds that fill up too much and backs the water up into the road. Maybe there's not an area in the park for the water to go and it's not getting out of the park fast enough. So that's something that we wanted to look at as well, is to see if there's something downstream from there that is causing this water to back up more often than not. The last component of the study is to take a look at a new program that we wanted to investigate for areas that have yard drainage problems. A lot of the neighbors, neighborhoods in this area have their drainage go to their backyard. There's a lot of hill slope that all comes down into a lower area. And a lot of times, those lower areas accumulate water in those areas from the entire neighborhood. And they, they don't get to the street fast enough. And it causes some nuisance areas on those yards where, you know, there's standing water, the grass doesn't grow, there's moss and mold and things like that. So one of the programs that we wanted to investigate is have a consultant look into other communities, what they're doing for these nuisance areas and to develop an ordinance and a method of payments that's fair to the property owners and the city, great pairs, to try to help alleviate those problems, those nuisance problems in the city. So that, that's the program that we haven't, that, that we're asking the money for, for the study. And if there's any questions, we can, I can take those.
All right, I've got a few emails we got that I want to read from people first. First is from Brian and Dana Jacobs from Fitchburg. As many of you already know, my wife and I have been active in encouraging the city to address the continued flooding issues that plague the neighborhood just south of Cheryl Drive, between Richardson Street and Jacqueline Drive. This affects both Cheryl Drive and the homes just south of the street. We have been working with the city since we purchased the home in 2015 with little to no progress. We're hopeful that this $50,000 study passes to improve these conditions that existed for more than 20 years. A neighbor shared the following photo from 2000 from the street in front of our home. This is what we experience multiple times a year, which extends up to 10 to 15 feet into our front yard. Our sun pump runs year-round and water remains in the street from discharge year-round as well. Our side yards and backyard fence line is underwater after nearly every rain. We have given up growing grass in these areas. We register in support of R 7621. Hope the city will finally do what is right to correct the stormwater issue. Current system cannot support heavy rains and the stormwater flow from above our neighborhood needs to be redirected away from the yards at the bottom of the hills. All right, I also have from Robert and Patricia Kamak from Fitchburg, and they register in support of R 7621. And then Mike and Sheila Lean from Fitchburg. We register in support of R 7621. It's critical that this stormwater study moves forward as we have experienced significant flooding on Cheryl Drive during the heavier rains. We also have quite a bit of standing water in backyards after these rains, which is a health hazard. Thanks for your support. All right, and I don't think we have any registered speakers or anything like that. So Julia, go ahead.
I want to ask for your support. This is happening in our district. We have been working with this neighbor for more than a year. We have meeting with them. They came to council several times. I have been there after a rain. I have been in those yard and the backyards. And some of those houses, the pumps have worked like 24-hour day. And the water, they had to do extra work with the, to take the, the water from the backyard. They had to, I think, they had to change the landscaping. They are trying to do everything. So, and I think we, we owe to them to, to do this study and to come up with solutions because, you know, the faster we move, we can determine what we need to do because the CIP is coming and we need to know, to put in the CIP any project that we need to do. So I will ask for your support. I don't know, Julia, you want to say something?
All right, Gabrielle, go ahead. No, all right, ditto.
Ditto.
All right, Jim?
I ride my bike around that area and it's really interesting when you see the hoses coming from people's backyards and everything. And even when it's not raining, you know, you still see water trickling out of those hoses. So, you know, I, I do support this. I think something do need to be done.
And this does need two-thirds. I don't know if it'll be an issue. I don't think it will be. I just want to make sure people know that. Dave, go ahead.
Yeah, I just like to add, you know, I know the, I know the Jacobs very well and I've been to the house and looked at that. And that was a, I, I, I hope I'm not getting out of place, but we never should have allowed a house there. To be honest, honest with you, that would have been a better, just a drainage swell. But, you know, they're good people and I see what we can do to, to help them. I've, I've known them for a long time.
All right, seeing nothing else. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay? All right, that's approved. Next one, Dave?
Oh, my computer kicked me out again. Here we go. All right, next. All right, next, move approval of Resolution R 8821, amending the 2021 refuse and recycling fund budget fencing and gates at the recycling center. Do we have a second?
Second.
This one, we're, we're putting some gates, but we're not, we're not changing our, not changing our rates on here. You know, it talks about the recycling fund budget, but we're moving money, I believe, from one place to another. Is that correct, Bill?
Yes. We, we have in the budget, we were going to budget for a compost screener where we would, you know, screen compost. And we had that in our, our budget. What we're doing is transferring that money towards the installation of some fencing. It's the, the tall fencing that you see for along the, the garbage places, the, the dumps. Gosh, it's escaping me right now. Anyway, you know, they're, they're very large fencing. We've got an issue with the recycling center that we have with the materials blowing around into the farm fields. And we do spend a lot of time every week going around picking up that garbage from the adjacent farm fields and, and yards around the area when the wind blows. So we'd like to get that fencing out there to catch it, to keep it on site. And the fencing that we are, we are proposing a gate in the area where the recycling center is, just in case we do decide operationally that we want to close that area at night or, or limit hours and protect our, our, our resources back there, so.
And did Public Works approve?
Yes.
And RCC, did they approve?
Yes.
And did Finance approve?
Yes, Finance approved.
All right, Julia?
I, you know, because I use the recycle a lot, so I wa, I want to imagine what we're trying to do here. So we're trying to put a fence, we, we should be, it would surely great if we have a map to see what we're doing. So we're going to put a gate there to go inside the recycle and then a fence where? Where all the big container cars on the back of that?
And the bits, so yeah, so in between where that is in the field behind it, so that stuff isn't blowing out into that field, the cornfield?
So it's going to be like a wood fence?
It sounds like it's going to be some kind like they have around the landfills. It's more, it sounds like that'd be, but those are chain link.
Fabric, yeah.
Yeah.
And then they, you're going to close? We need to, so it's going to be hours of operation for, to go to the recycle now?
Gabriella, you?
Yeah, so right now, it's not going to be like that. But they're not changing the hours, but that might be coming soon. It's something we're going to talk about in RCC and would certainly come to council. But that's, that's a possible next step. And so having the gates up has like an added benefit of that we are able to close it if we want to.
So it's a future issue that we'll end up talking about, sounds like? Because I know a lot of people who don't live in Fitchburg are using it, which is part of the problem. Further questions at all? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, name? All right, that's approved. Next one?
Next, move approval Resolution R 9121, approving agreement for subdivision improvements in the plant of Olivia's Place. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. This, this subdivision.
Did Public Works approve?
Two lots are being.
Dave, did Public Works approve?
Yes, they did, yes.
All right, what's it about?
Two lots are being, I don't know if you want to say rezoned, Bill, but we're, two lots are being cut into smaller slices. I believe there'll be six, six parcels from those, those two lots. So it's a change of the original, original plat.
Anything you want to add, Bill?
It's close. They're going from five lots to eight lots.
Wow, it wasn't even close.
Subdivision improvement agreement is for the construction of the sidewalk, grading and utility locations.
I know this is pretty standard for, for divisions, subdivisions. Any other questions? All right. Yeah, Julia?
Why didn't go to plan commission this?
The plant did go to plan commission, wasn't approved, and I think it was February or March.
Oh.
Yeah, we did, we approved it.
Okay, okay.
All right, seeing nothing else? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, name? All right, that was approved. Next one?
Excellent, move approval Resolution R 9821, Resolution authorizing.
Sorry, 98.
Oh, I'm sorry, R 9421, approving memorandum of understanding between city and Dane County regarding a new stilling basin on county property. This has been approved.
Hold on, I need a second first.
Second.
Saying by Gabriella, did Public Works approve?
Yes, we did.
Did RCC?
Yes.
All right, what's this one?
So we are, we are making some modifications and along the road. And the county is, we're installing, it's called a stilling basin, basically a, a place to capture, capture sediment in, in the county property. We're, we're putting that in and county is giving us permission to, permission to do that as part of the, the, the deal with, you know, changing the ditch. Am I, am I close on this one, Bill?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Julia, you have a question?
Yeah, my question is, why the city is doing this in Dane County property? And how much is going to be and who is going to pay for this?
Bill, do you want to speak to that?
Yep. We currently have a culvert that goes under West Clayton Road that is within the right of way. That resides within the right of way. The, the discharge of that pipe goes into Dane County's area, which is a wetland environmental corridor. So what Dane County had mentioned, in order to prevent, you know, more sediment and pollution from going into the wetlands, they wanted us to install a stilling basin at the end of that pipe, which is on their land. So that's why we're doing that. It's 100% city cost, we're just, it's, it's not a very big expense. It's excavating it out, putting in some, some fabric and some, some large stone riprap to slow the water down and then extend the ditch to where we discharge further into the wetlands.
But how much is, you know, you say it's no, it's like a $1,000, $10,000, you know?
I believe the, the change in cost for the extra grading was about $4,000.
Gabriella?
Last night at RCC, Claudia also said that, you know, I was concerned about the long-term maintenance of an additional facility since we already have so many. But she said it's a very small basin, it's about 10 by 10, 10 feet by 10 feet. And she said the maintenance probably like once every five years. She's not concerned about it as, as much of an additional cost to the city. And it, it's going to protect the wetlands, so it's, it's a good thing to have.
All right. Seeing nothing else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And opposed, name? All right, that's approved. Next one?
Next, the move approval Resolution R 9821, Resolution authorizing first amendment design contract with KNL Engineering for the design of County Highway MM McCoy Road intersection and signal improvements.
All right, is there a signal?
Second.
Saying by Gabriella, did Public Works approve?
Yes, they did.
Did Finance approve?
Yes.
All right, what's this one?
The scope of the work, mostly the state made additional requirements, intersection that, that had to be, additional work that had to be done that wasn't in the original design, design contract with KNL Engineering. Part of it was keeping a bicycle, the bicycle trail open and temporary, I believe some temporary signaling. These were all things that, as they came to light, they were, they were, they were conveyed to, to Bill, you know, that these are, these are out of scope and had heads up. And this is fine, kind of, we looked at, what is this, what is this change order? You know, the cost to, to do these things. And again, mostly the state, the state drove most of these.
All right, any questions? Julia?
From how we are going to pay for, from which fund we are paying the, the difference?
Bill, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. The, we, we have a capital improvement program or project in place for that. We had budgeted $250,000. The additional design work is going to be split from, with the county at one-third city, two-thirds county. And it's still within the original CIP budget.
It's like a well.
All right. Seeing nothing else? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, name? All right, that's approved. One more.
Next move approval Resolution R 9921, Resolution revoking a highway occupancy permit within the Notre Dame right of way.
Is there a second? Saying by Randy, did Public Works approve?
Yes, we did.
All right, what's this about?
This is, I believe the Fahy Glens, there was a, or maybe it wasn't Fahy Glens. There was a, when it was planned, the road was planned, there was a garage that was allowed to be left, left there until the final, the final road design was done. And so now we're exercising that, we're going to change the road. And so we're giving the, giving the owner, I don't know, for 60 days or whatever, to, to remove the, to vacate that garage. And they've known about this, it's not, it's not controversial, they've known it's been coming. And so I think it's just, this was, this was planned for, planned for a number of years.
All right, any questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, name? All right, that's approved. Anything else for Public Works? That's all your resolutions anyway.
I'm worn out.
All right. Parks Commission, Julia?
Okay, so I, I want to, to tell you that I wasn't, I didn't participate in the meeting, I was out of town. I watched the meeting, okay? So I didn't have the opportunity to discuss this resolution with them, I'm going to discuss it today.
All right.
So I need a approval of Resolution R dash 95 dash 20, oh, no, we need to remove the other one.
Yep, first postponed, definitely the first year.
I need a, a resolution to table indefinitely, Resolution R dash 63 dash 21.
Saying by Jay? And this is like we talked before, we already proved these, there's just some miscommunication on referring out. All right, all in favor of postponing indefinitely or table indefinitely, say aye.
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 And opposed, name? All right, that's table indefinitely, next one?
And then we need to do the, the same with the next one. And I move to, to table indefinitely, Resolution R dash 64 dash 21.
Second.
Saying by Jay? All in favor of table indefinitely, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, name? All right, that one's postponed as well. All right, that's.
Then I move approval of Resolution R dash 95 dash 21, amending the 2021 park fee budget NSGC shed addition.
Second. Saying by Joe, did Parks Commission approve?
Uh, yes.
Did Public Works approve?
Yes, we did.
Did Finance approve?
Yes.
All right, and then this is another one that will need two thirds because it is a budget amendment. And do you want to speak to this, Julia, or do you want Mike or someone else?
Uh, you know, what I, my understanding is that they are looking to, to add, there is a shed in the, in the, in North, what is in the?
Nine Springs.
Nine Spring Golf Course. There is like, there is a shelter and then there is another shed. And then they want to add an additional one. Because there is a complaint, I don't know if their neighbor or the developer, they don't like the way all the equipment is parked beside the big shed. So they want to, some, something to cover that. And they are planning to pay for that with park dedication fee from the quarry rich retirement community. There are some picture in the package, you can see where they want to do the second, the addition is where all this equipment is. The equipment doesn't belong to the city. The equipment is, belongs to the, the, the.
Golf course.
The golf course, the provider, the, how do you call it? Operator, operator of the golf course. The, I don't know, I'm missing something.
Uh, Scott, do you want to add anything?
Oh, what's called is there?
Anything you want to add?
I, I think that's good. It's about 675 square feet and it would be the same type of structure, tongue and groove, same rough line, that kind of thing.
I know right now he's using some like blue tarps to cover up some of the equipment. And they tend to blow away in bad, bad storms and it's not great. Uh, Dave and then Julia, after that.
Yeah, Scott, Scott provided pictures. I, you know, I would prefer not to do, do this, but it looks like a garbage dump there. You know, I drove, I drove down and parked and granted that, that equipment was there before those apartments were built. So I, I, you know, I'm not totally sympathetic with the people. I, I looked and most of their view is, is the nice golf course, you know? But it, it does look lousy. You know, my only suggestion is we probably could get kind of a Quonset hut, you know, something temporarily for a few years. But it, it needs to be, it needs to be addressed. It's a, it's an eyesore.
Julia?
Yeah, I'm, I have, I am conflicted about this because, you know, I think the operator should do a better job about organizing this equipment there. If, if the equipment belonged to the city, I will say, yes, let's do it because it's our property, we need to protect it. This, this project was in the CIP to be done in the 2026. We are rushing it to do it in 21 because I want to know what is the logic? Because the developer doesn't like the way it looks. You know what I mean? So, and then we are going to use $54,000 for park, from park fee in lieu of land dedication from another development on the west side of the city. And my question is, my understanding is this is a community park and we can use those fee, I am fine with that. But my understanding is that we need to use those fee for new amenities. And this one is not a new amenity. Or it should be double the size of the current amenity in the place. So, and I want to understand if we are follow the rules on how to use this fee. Because you know what? I will use this, I would prefer to use this $54,000 in the inclusive playground. You know what I mean? So I don't know, I want to know why we are rushing this in. And I think the operator of the place could do a better job to organizing and to keep, to keep that place in good condition, clean. This is my position.
Misty, I see you popped up on the screen there, do you want to speak to that?
To at least that one piece of it. So the, it does need to be used towards a new amenity. And so since we are adding on to the shed, it's allowed. If we were reciting the old shed or tearing down the old one and putting up the exact same thing, that wouldn't be allowed. But because it's an addition that is permitted, and I'm not aware of a, has to double the size requirement. That's not something I, I know about.
Okay. Gabriella?
Well, and to the, to the equipment, he has gained some additional equipment and, and the shed is, is darn near full at this point. So the equipment that remains outside is because there isn't room inside the, for, for the equipment, so.
Uh, I, I don't think that this is a justified expense. I mean, it would be nice to have it look nicer, but we're talking about a park, $75,000, which is, it is a significant amount of money. It is a park that is only accessible to people that pay for it and is protecting equipment that does not belong to the city. And I don't think that that is justified at this point in time, especially when there are projects coming down the line that are actually going to be used by people in that neighborhood and people over the community that are going to cost money. And I don't want to be sitting here, if I'm, if I'm here in four years and we're making a vote on hub phase two and, you know, we're short $75,000, you know, goodness knows I'm going to regret this vote. So I cannot support this project in good faith.
I've got Jay and then Jim after that.
Scott, who's the current operator of the golf course?
Uh, Dan Larson.
Oh, okay, so he's still there?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, see, I, we have had discussions with developers for as long as I can imagine about our park dedication fees. And most of the discussions I've had with developers is that they would prefer that the park dedication fees be used to improve things in the parks, in the neighborhoods, that they donated them for. be used to improve things in the parks, in the neighborhoods, that they donated them for. Not, and, and, you know, I guess I would have a, a quarrel with the word amenity, when we're talking about a shed that's gonna be used by a private operator. That's not, it's not an amenity, that's a, that's a shed for a private operator. And I, I, you know, I, I don't, I don't have the foggiest idea what it takes to maintain a golf course, but the golf course hasn't changed in size in fifty years, so it would seem that, um, whatever facilities they've had should be adequate to store whatever equipment they need now, so maybe they just have too much equipment, I don't know, but I think there's some more exploration that needs to be done before we spend this kind of money on this project in a park that is not in the neighborhood where the funds came from.
Jim?
Misty, you mentioned something in Finance about park funds being, um, that we have to use it. And this was part of that, that, um, they would do something, but they had to be used in a certain period of time?
Aaron, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead, yep.
So, yes, the, there was a law change a couple of years back that required, that put a timeframe on when those fees had to be used, and it's seven or ten years, depending on a couple of circumstances, um, and so when we were looking at which fees to apply to this project, uh, we did the oldest, the oldest fees collected under the new law that has that timeframe, that's not already planned for another project. So, there is a timeframe, but we are, I mean, that development is still under construction currently, so we're, we're not anywhere near meeting that deadline yet.
And what happens to those funds if we hit the seven or ten years?
We have to reimburse them.
I'll give it back to the developer, okay, alright, but we're a lot ways away from hitting that. Alright, Julia?
Or we can use it in another park that really need it, and we, it can be used by all the community, like the inclusive playground, you know what I mean, so I'm gonna vote no for this.
Anyone else? Alright, and as a reminder, this is another one that needs two-thirds, so we need six out of eight for it to pass. Oh, sorry, Joe, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, um, Misty, where would we be on that seven to ten years?
So again, the, the building's currently under construction, so it's, it's seven years from when it's collected, I believe we just collected them last year, so it's, there's still a decent amount of time.
Oh, got it, uh, yeah, so, um, I know Valerie isn't here, but I've, I've always heard conversations about potential lawsuits, is there any risk for anything like that? I don't know if it's applicable in this situation.
I guess I'm not sure lawsuit about what, so if we don't spend the money within the timeframes, or within a, a eligible use, then the developer that paid it could in theory sue us, and then, you know, we'd go to court over whether or not we met the timeframe, or did not, and whether or not we eligible use or not, is that what you mean?
No.
I think so, I mean, I, I just heard that conversation come up in, uh, conversations about park fees and, and developers, so I, I believe that that's what I'm referring to.
I'm quite confident in five or six years, the council at the time will find a way to spend the money. Alright, Jim?
Yeah, this whole park fee issue, I, I think we really need to, and I know not now, but I think, you know, we need to have a discussion in the future, because, I, I'm new to the council, but I just worry sometimes there's some equity issues here, and that I think we need to discuss this whole process, so that everybody in the community understands, um, what it is.
You can ask.
Maybe the whole type of a thing.
Yeah, you can ask Randy too.
Alright, anything else on this one? Julia, do you have a?
So, I want to, uh, this quarry-rich retirement community, is there a new senior community behind Target?
I think so, yeah.
That is under construction.
Yep.
Okay, okay, so for clarification.
Yep. Alright, anything else? Alright, then, all in favor?
Roll call requested.
Say, alright, I don't think we need it, but sure, I guess roll call.
Alder Allen?
No.
Alder Radafraada?
No.
Alder Gerhurt?
No.
Alder Hurt?
Nay.
Alder Maldonado?
Nay.
Alder Strassman?
No.
Alder Udon?
No.
Alder Wheeler?
No.
Alright, that fails. Anything else for Parks, Julia?
Parks, uh, I wasn't present, so I, I don't, you know, it was like a almost three-hour meeting, but, um, I will be prepared to prepare the next one that I am attending.
No problem. Alright, uh, Library Board, Jay?
Uh, we had, uh, we will not be meeting until June, so.
Alright. Commission, Asian Wow, Dave?
Uh, our first meeting is, um, Thursday, but I had a discussion with Jill, and she's, at that meeting, she's kind of giving her, her, I guess you would call it State of the Union, or, you know, her, her forward vision at, at that, at that meeting, if anyone wants to, uh, wants to listen, it's on, I think it's, it's on Thursday, it's on Thursday morning, I can't remember if it was eight-thirty or ten, but I think it's eight, eight or eight-thirty on Thursday morning.
I know they're starting to open up and provide some services as well.
Yes, they are.
Alright, RCC?
Resource Conservation Commission met last night, and, uh, a couple of things to note. The new street sweeper that we just approved, um, we actually recently did a artwork competition with young people in the community, uh, to pick a new design, and I think Scott, if you're able to pull it up, we did select, uh, artwork from a young person, and that's what it's gonna look like.
Cool.
So, I think it's really, yeah, it's really neat, it's got the, you know, City Hall campus in silhouette in the background, and then if you scroll down, you can see what it, it's like, projected to look like actually on the street sweeper. So, yeah, it's really cute, and hopefully we'll do something with the, with the winner, um, when, when that's actually up and running, so.
Let him drive the truck.
Yes, so it's a really nice little, little thing, I thought everyone would enjoy, uh, taking a look at that. Uh, a couple other announcements, um, number one, the plastic bag recycling in your, your personal cart has been discontinued. So you can no longer recycle plastic bags in your cart, however, there are still places in the community where you can recycle those, typically, you know, a lot of grocery stores will have receptacles, so if you're still interested in doing that, bring it to your, um, local, um, grocery store, and you can recycle it there. And then our fall recycling event, uh, we did not have one last year, but we're gonna have one this year, it's gonna be Saturday, November sixth, eight to eleven AM. So save up your confidential documents and electronics for recycling, if you need to do something in the meantime, there are ways to go about that, in the meantime, check out our recycling guide on the website, which is a very useful resource. That's all.
Alright, what about TTC?
TTC, the Transportation Transit Committee is meeting on Thursday, this Thursday, uh, May thirteenth at six-thirty PM, and we will actually be talking about, um, some developments in the Lacey, West Lacey Road project. Um, there'll be some more information about the tree survey, and, um, cost estimates for retained dwellers, things of that nature that we discussed at the last council meeting, so the council might want to tune in if you want a preview of what we might talk about on the twenty-sixth. Oh, sorry, the twenty-fifth, uh, that's all.
Dave, do you have a question?
Not a question, but I, I believe tomorrow the ad hoc committee is meeting, you know, to cover some of those issues that Shannon was talking about.
Alright, uh, Seda, I don't know, Julia or Jim? Alright, Agon Rural Affairs?
Uh, Agon Rural Affairs, nothing to report, but the, we are meeting next Tuesday, a week from today, May eighteenth at four o'clock.
Alright, what about EMS?
Um, no reports since the last time we met, we're meeting, um, next Thursday.
Alright, what about the Bike Committee, Joe?
Um, no updates, you can refer back to the May, or the April thirteenth meeting. Um, I do want to reemphasize though that there be a bike rodeo, um, in Allied Park this Saturday, so, um, uh, you should be, it's cosponsored partly by the city of Pittsburgh. So, please encourage folks to register and attend.
Alright, what about Tree Advisory?
We are meeting this Thursday, May thirteenth at four PM.
Alright, Landmarks Preservation?
Nothing to report.
Alright, Housing Advisory, Joe?
Um, haven't, I'm at yet, but the next meeting is on June fourteenth, and I also forgot to mention that the, uh, Bike Committee, the next meeting is, uh, June four.
Alright, what about Healthy Neighborhoods, Jay?
No report.
Alright, Stoner Prairie Planning, Park Planning, Randy?
Uh, Stoner Prairie meets next Wednesday, May nineteenth at seven PM.
Alright, what about Finance, Randy?
Okay. Yes, uh, Finance Committee, approved, approval of bills. Detailed, detailed review of all checks issued checks, number one-two-two-zero-six-one through one-two-two-one-zero-seven, April sixteenth through the thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one totaling four-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty dollars and sixty-seven cents. Uh, the next is detailed review of all ACH payments, April first through the thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one totaling seven-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars and thirty-four cents. We reviewed the, uh, the P-card transactions for the cycle ending April sixth, twenty-twenty-one totaling one-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and ten cents. Uh, on to resolutions and ordinances. Motion to approve resolution R dash eighty-six dash twenty-one authorizing the release of the city's right to levy deferred special assessments. Do you have a second?
Second.
Sent by Jay, and what's this about?
Well, I'd like to refer this to Misty, it is very complicated, is she available still?
I don't know, oh, there she is.
There she is, she's hiding.
That, so, uh, this is based on a development agreement in TID four, so TID four is the TID that's by City Hall, and then goes up, and is how we paid for the interchange on Highway fourteen. Uh, when we put in that interchange, we diverted from the city's usual practice of using those pay-go developer bonds, and instead the city put in the infrastructure for that interchange, and included in the development agreement that if the development didn't happen as promised, that the city had the ability to go back and specially assess of the cost of that infrastructure to the benefiting properties instead. Uh, also included in that development agreement was a clause that if they wanted to sell any of the property that was covered by that development agreement, they needed permission from the city, uh, to get out of this clause. Uh, so, we, the, the transaction that's sparking this is that they want to sell a piece of land to QuickTrip, uh, in order to get a, a project started, and we are okay releasing this, this ability, because the interchange is fully paid for, uh, and the development all happened as expected, and the TID is very healthy, and was able to absorb all of that, so, uh, no risk to the city, it's all been accounted for, and we feel comfortable releasing that right.
Alright, any questions on this? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed name? Alright, anything else for Finance, Randy?
Uh, no, nothing else.
Alright, what about Personnel, Julia?
Uh, we are meeting tomorrow.
Alright, Public Safety, anything?
Just a lot of, uh, have a lot of activities going on this summer, um, you know, people requested liquor licenses and, and noise, elevated noise permits, so, um, you know, a lot of encouraging things, activities going on that we didn't have last summer, so, uh, probably as many as a half dozen, and the other thing, Brat Fest is being distributed around to different, um, businesses this year, so it's not a centralized location, so, two in, two in Pittsburgh will be kind of be Brat Fest, Brat Fest sites.
Three.
Three, yeah, you're right, thank you, Jay.
Alright, excellent. Uh, Mayor's Report, I just got two quick things, one, we'll try again in two weeks, if everyone can make it, and try to do a group photo, we'll just keep trying, hopefully we can get that in sometime, uh, before a meeting here, unless people have to be gone, that's okay too. And then also the PFC talked a little bit, um, last night about the hiring of the new police chief, it's gonna be a very similar process, actually, and a lot of similar steps to the, uh, city administrator recruitment, and Sarah's gonna be leading that, so there are some opportunities for the public to be involved, just like there was for that, uh, ultimately, the PFC makes that decision, hiring decision, but, uh, if you want to learn more about the process, very similar to what we just did though, and so there's gonna be plenty of opportunities for people in the community to meet those people, especially the finalists, and so look for that, they're hoping, I think September-ish, that a new chief would start, so, that's good. Uh, that's all I have for now, all the reports, I can start with, uh, Joe, District One, anything, Joe?
Yep, um, there is a, um, vaccine clinic at the Boys and Girls Club this Saturday. Although I, I would, you know, say I encourage folks that are residents in the, um, you know, uh, Belmar neighborhood to apply, it's, it's open to all. And just a reminder that, uh, CDC has passed guidance that, uh, twelve-to-fifteen-year-olds, uh, can be vaccinated, so, I know I'll be bringing my, uh, teenage son, as well as, um, uh, my wife, uh, to be able to get that, uh, vaccine, but, if you go to bgcdc.org slash covid vaccine, um, you can sign up for a slot, it'll be the Pfizer, um, BioNTech vaccine, um, the address is forty-six nineteen Genoan Road. Um, it'll be from ten AM to twelve PM, again, May fifteenth, and all vaccinations will be administered by, um, uh, trained individuals from Pittsburgh Family Pharmacy and the UW Madison School of Pharmacy, so, uh, big, big, big thank you to our nonprofit and business partners in, uh, here in Pittsburgh for making this happen, uh, for the community, it's vital and it's necessary.
Alright, Dave?
Um, unfortunately, we had a, uh, we had a robbery on, um, Valley Forge last night, you know, very nice family, I, I haven't got all the details yet, uh, the, the Gill, um, Alexis Gill family, I believe their home was, was robbed last night on Valley Forge, which is, uh, close to my home. Uh, on a brighter note, if you get a chance, stop in the Jamestown, um, Eagle Park, you know, our community gardens are up and running, Joe, Joe came over and helped us on Saturday, um, we have, uh, eleven plots there, and, um, if, if everything doesn't get frozen tonight, you know, we're off to a good start. Uh, also, if you have, if you know people in the, in the district that have coached baseball, or are willing to volunteer, we're trying to get some T-ball and coach pitch, informal setup in the neighborhood, and I'm, I'm in need of equipment, old gloves, bats, uh, tees, hitting sticks, uh, baseballs, tennis balls, and mostly I need, uh, I need, uh, some parents or teenagers to help me with that, so, if you know anyone that you could twist their arm, uh, let me know. And I'll ask one last thing, uh, thanks, uh, Jack Pearson has helped us, we've made pretty good progress, um, King James Way was really a garbage dump here after the snowfall, and we're, we're down to one couch, you know, so, uh, making pretty good, pretty good progress, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful within a, a week or so, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll turn the corner on this, and, and, uh, I've been talking to a number of residents, I think we have a path, path forward to keep it in, you know, a nice-looking area, it's, there's, there's, they're nice apartments, um, there's no reason why, you know, a few people should allow it to, should be allowed to ruin, make it unsanitary and, and dirty for, for the majority, so, Jack's, Jack's helped us, we've made some good progress. That's all.
Dave, don't forget, too.
Go ahead, Joe.
I said, Dave, don't forget Nia helped too.
Yes, 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 thank you, Joe's, Joe's daughter, Nia, was there, and as much as I tried to get her to eat an earthworm, uh, she, she, she was not willing to.
Maybe next time, alright, uh, Julia?
Are you sick? Okay, so, um, so what I want to mention is, there was a meeting last week for the Inclusive Playground Group, um, and then, I want to tell you that I received a Manisong Community Foundation booklet, and then, the new funds created in twenty-twenty, we are there, so we are legit, you know what I mean, so people can donate, because we are, uh, the community, um, the Manisong Community Foundation is our fiscal, uh, partner, and the Fit for Inclusive Playground Campaign Fund is here, okay, so, and then, uh, regarding the, the inclusive, uh, inclusive playground, um, we are gonna send the RFP in May seventeen, expecting to, the due date, June seventh, and then, we are gonna do a neighborhood survey of some, um, between the, uh, between June twelfth and June twenty-sixth, and then, it's gonna go back to park commission for review, then it's gonna come to council, and then, um, then, we are gonna have the final approval, uh, by council in August, and then the idea is to start with installation, by, uh, before November first, it's, we are gonna do all the earth, uh, work, okay? So, that one is what will be the more expensive, um, uh, part is to, uh, to set the, the floor, you know, uh, so, but we are working, it's coming, and I will, um, encourage- So, but we are working, it's coming and I will um, encourage people to donate uh, to the Madison Community Foundation, to the Fish for um, uh, inclusive playground. Um, so, so far we are, we have collected around close to eighty thousand dollar in private funds. Um, so keep moving. So that's it for me. Oh, and I need to congratulate, sorry, some graduates from my district, um, especially um, um, you know, uh, this kid, I know them since kindergarten in Leopoli School. They are living in District Two. Uh, Noah and Eli Zarovsky and uh, Austin Kofron. And then to uh, congratulate for her PhD, Dawn Cream. So all these people that I want to say congratulations.
All right, Gabriel?
I just want to uh, reiterate again, the, the meeting that uh, our administrator mentioned, um, Thursday afternoon, or I guess evening, five thirty P M. at McKee Farms Park in the indoor shelter. There's gonna be a meeting uh, held by Encore Senior Living about a potential development on lots fifty-three and fifty-four, which are actually adjacent to McKee Farms Park. People might actually think it's part of the park. I think that's why it can be controversial. It like, looks like, oh, it's just an overgrown part of the park. No, it's actually private land. And um, this development is, they're in the planning phases. They're gonna bring it forward to the city. Hasn't gone through any city processes yet, but it will very soon. So if you're curious about that, you know, it will change how the park looks, you know, that because there's gonna be a new building in the area. So I'd encourage you to come out if you can, Thursday, May thirteenth, five thirty P M. And find out a little bit more and share what you think as well. Uh, hope to see you there.
All right, Jay?
I have two items. Um, some of you may know that I serve on the South Central Wisconsin Rail Transit Commission. And what our commission does is it regulates um, rail, the rail corridors in uh, Dane County, Green County, Lafayette County. Uh, so as, when things change with crossings or uh, whatever, you know, if we deal with rails to trails programs, that kind of thing. So uh, all I wanted to report is that our commission met last week and we approved uh, contingent upon legal review. The, the revised crossing that's gonna be uh, a- at Lacy Road uh, right by Seminole Highway that we were talking about for a long time last week. Um, and I understand that's gonna probably come back next week, so, or in two weeks. So um, but it's, that's been approved through with, with us through D O T. Um, the other thing that I wanted to point out is um, tonight there were referred to the Plan Commission two uh, things, a rezoning and conditional use permit and a certified survey map request for uh, what's eventually going to be on Compass Health in the Fitchburg Technology Campus. So there's been a rather uh, lengthy uh, dialogue with some of the neighbors. So this area is directly south of Quarry Hill. And uh, when, when the, a chunk of Fitchburg Technology Campus was, was rezoned ten, twelve years ago, maybe longer than that, maybe fifteen years ago. And so the data center uh, is in that section. It, it was a P D D. Uh, and the P D D had restrictions on it regarding sound because the data center has eight uh, generators that make a lot of noise. So the residents asked for a lot of sound um, uh, things because they test these generators and they're disturbing when one of them goes on. So uh, the, this particular parcel was not included in that because it wasn't part of the original P D D. But they're asking for the rezone now so that they can build this other building on it. And the neighborhood is pretty adamant that the same sound restrictions that were, that were in the P D D where the data center and some other buildings are now be applied to this building as well. I, I don't anticipate there's gonna be a problem because they may have a backup generator, but they're not gonna have eight of them. Um, but the neighborhood has been pretty vocal about this. I expect that some people are gonna turn out at the Plan Commission meeting when this gets discussed. And they're gonna be expecting to see this as a condition. So I just want to let the Plan Commission know ahead of time that you might want to consider this as a condition of this conditional use permit. And that's all I had.
All right, thank you. Shannon? Anything? Nope. Jim?
Nothing.
Nothing, Randy?
Uh, just a couple of things. The, under the American Rescue Recovery Plan, the F C C has implemented an emergency broadband program. And uh, they're accepting applications uh, tomorrow, May twelfth. Uh, but the, the program itself is for those that are struggling with uh, broadband payments, benefits. Um, in, in general though, it's, it's providing a discount of up to fifty dollars per month towards broadband service. Uh, if the uh, household is eligible. And seventy dollars per month for households that qualify, uh, qualifying tribal lands. Um, there's, there's just all kinds of, of, of benefits that it's, that it's offering. So anybody that's having trouble meeting their broadband expenses, uh, reach out to me, reach out to Alder Meladano. He uh, also had forwarded this information. I had read about it already. And then it also came from Joyce Frye uh, with um, the Economic Development Team. Uh, so if there's anybody out there that uh, uh, is, is having a difficult time with their making their payments for broadband, please reach out and we can point you in the right direction. And then uh, the Fitchburg Senior Center Friends is, uh, there's four new members uh, positions opening up. And if anybody's interested, reach out, fill out an application. And um, I believe it's in October those seats would be filled. Maybe, maybe it's September. I, I don't, I'm not quite sure, but it is in the fall. And then um, it was also noted that they will be meeting in person in June for the first time in over a year, which we can all relate to. And um, other than that, slow down on Fish Hatchery when you're out. Just gotta put that reminder in. It's been a little crazy out there at times. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Slow down everywhere.
Yeah.
Well, there's.
There's a lot of neighborhoods, a lot of streets through that. Uh, Redistricting ad hoc. At this point, I'm still, we're still trying to figure out when we're gonna actually get the information to do redistricting. We're hoping August. Tracy, have heard anything more about when we're gonna actually get that, that information? I think it's still up in the air.
Yeah, the last I heard is we wouldn't get anything till the end of July. So we're looking at the beginning of August. Um, but I'm not sure if maybe we want to start thinking about who you want to appoint to possibly be on the committee. Um, that's a discussion we can probably have any time.
Yeah, we got a lot of great applicants actually for the redistricting committee. I need to call people and just verify that they still want to do it since the timing's a little bit off. But uh, I can do that in the next couple of weeks here and have those people in the next two weeks. So I can announce it in a couple of weeks. But very impressive group of people. And we're gonna have a lot of great diversity in terms of different areas of the city and all the other types of, you know, a lot of other different types of diversity. So really impressive group that we're gonna have for that. So look for more. Yeah, question?
Uh, how many people are you planning to?
It's uh, seven.
Seven?
Yeah, one is, uh, Randy is the council rep, but then six residents. Yep. Yep. And we talked about that a few months ago too. I can, uh, if anyone knew, I can give, send you the deck that I went through. Or you can go back and look at the meeting too. So, all right, uh, no unfinished business, new business. Uh, we got some direct referrals. Looks like this first one is Public Works, maybe? Do you wanna, Dave, do you wanna do this one?
Dash twenty-one, approving amendment for construction contract with I G E for Fish Hatchery Road Left Turn Lane Reconstruction.
Standing by Jade, did Public Works approve?
Yes, we did. This is.
Did Finance approve?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
What's this about, Dave?
Uh, we're extending the left turn lane uh, on uh, Cheryl, Cheryl Drive. Uh, if you um, look at it, or I, I took it tonight, it's uh, it's really in bad shape. It's not very long. So um, they're using the same crews that are working on the, the other part of Fish Hatchery Road. So we, we, we get a better, better cost structure to, to do that. And we have, we have existing budget uh, to, to cover this.
I believe this is coming out of the TID, isn't it, Misty or Mike?
No, I don't believe.
Yeah.
It is?
It is. Yep.
Partially. So the, the TID is paying for a portion of the extension of the left-hand turn lane. The city is paying for the difference of that. And then the redoing of the existing left-hand turn lane is split between us and the county.
Okay, thank you, Misty.
And I know that this also requires two-thirds vote because it is a budget amendment as well. Uh, questions on this one? Yeah, Julia? I think it was supposed to be done a year or two ago, actually. It's been in there for a while, yeah. But I think it's the timing, I think it's pushed back partly because of the timing of Fish Hatchery Road.
Oh, okay, you would, okay.
Benefit there in cost. All right, anything else? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that's approved. Uh, it looks like maybe another Public Works one.
Uh, move approval, resolution R one hundred dash twenty-one. Proving agreement with Wisconsin and Southern River Road for rail crossing improvements at Sain Road and Lacy Road.
Is this second?
Second.
Standing by Randy, did Public Works approve?
Yes, we did.
Did Finance approve?
Yes, Finance approved.
All right, what's this one?
Uh, as part of the reconstruction, the TID will be paying, paying for this. Uh, the, uh, the intersection, I guess we just need to make it wider uh, at that place, at, at Lacy on the, on the rail crossings. They have a wider separation. Um, is Bill still here?
Yeah, there he is.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the um, part of the, the TID project plan included the railroad improvement for that to make it a quiet zone compliant. And what that will do with the reconstruction is um, there'll, there'll be uh, four quadrant gates there. There'll be, uh, it's going to be a wider intersection. There'll be a median in there. So there's gonna be one-way traffic uh, on either side of the median. And um, because there's not enough room between Sain Road and the railroad crossing, there will be some traffic signal improvements there tied into the railroad improvements to make it even safer. So uh, the TID project plan includes that in there. And we're looking to get this under contract with Wisconsin Southern in order to uh, secure the funds for the TID before the expenditure period closes later this month.
Yeah, I know one of the problems is that if a school bus pulls up to the stop sign, the back of the school bus is still over the railroad. So trying to give more room in there. Other questions on this one? Julia?
So here it mentioned that it's, it's gonna cost eight hundred thousand dollar. This one is related to the next resolution, true?
You're correct, yep.
Yeah, they're related.
Okay.
You're correct.
Okay. So that one is the budget, eight hundred thousand dollar to do this. Yes, okay.
All right, anything else? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, number three.
Uh, move approval, resolution R one oh two dash twenty-one. Proving agreement with M G N E to underground overhead power lines associated with rail crossings at Sain and Lacy Road.
Standing, standing by Jay, did Public Works approve?
Yes, we did.
Did Finance?
Finance did.
All right, and this will need two-thirds vote as well. What's this one about, Dave?
So the, the gates are going to be, as, as um, Bill mentioned, probably gonna be moving the four quadrant gates. And we're concerned about as they swing open the length of them. They may, they may be in conflict with the M G N E twelve K V overhead line. Um, there's a couple of options. We could ask M G N E to go higher or um, possibly, you know, um, go underground to avoid the conflict. Uh, the study, that'll be evaluated and, and the decision will be made. But I, I gotta think it'll end up going, you know, be an underground option. Again, both of these two, uh, you know, they're, I realize why, they've been in the budget, why they're going, but you know, it's a lot of money to spend for, you know, a train that goes twenty-five miles an hour, you know, not that often. And the quiet zone, as soon as you get at Irish Lane, you know, there, the horn's blowing for them down there. So I, you know, they, they give me heartburn. I have, you know, I wish we could get by without them, but I, you know, what, I, I believe they're, they're necessary improvements here.
Jay?
Well, ul- ultimately because of uh, where this area is, that's a, it's a thirteen-point-eight line, isn't it?
Yeah, you're correct, Jay. You're correct. It's thirteen.
So ultimately, I mean, this, this area is within our um, within our future urban service area plan. And I think ultimately, we'd want to have that undergrounded probably all the way down to Irish Lane. And maybe up to, up to McCoy as well. So um, I mean, this is a piece of that. I don't, I, it looks like it, they were just talking about a half-mile piece?
Yeah, just from, the, the riser pole is, is uh, just on this side, this side of uh, Sain. And then it goes over the track and continues down, down Lacy to, it's three or four spans till um, eventually, eventually it goes underground again at the roundabout. It's a little farther. And I, I'm not sure how much is being proposed here. If it's just, I, I was guessing it was just the amount to get it under the railroad.
Well, some, somewhere in here I saw that um, they, it was a half-mile.
Well, then that would take it, that would.
So that might go to the roundabout, maybe.
You are correct. That, that's where the riser starts.
What if we ask Bill? Bill, do you wanna speak to that?
Yes, uh, it includes the area from Sain or from Lacy Road, Lacy and Sain, all the way to the west to the roundabout. As well as, I think it's seven hundred feet north and south on Lacy Road or on Sain Road, uh, due to the uh, relocation of the roadway. So in the area of that relocation that we're gonna have to do, we're undergrounding it in that area.
I would just, I would just add, you know, we've kind of put M G N E on notice after what happened on Lacy Road that we're not, uh, if, if there are any issues that come up, they're not to do any work. You know, they stop and, and bring them to our attention and tell us what the cost is. We're not going to uh, get it done. And then, you know, have them expect that we're gonna pay a fifty percent change order because they, they did work without our approval. So that I believe that has been conveyed to them or they're, they're, they're painfully aware of the, you know, the, the scolding that they got from Tom Clowder last time, so.
All right, Julia, did you have a comment?
We are increasing this um, from, it's gonna be almost more than a half a million dollar, you know, to do this. And then I was reading the memo and I wanna agree with you today because when I read that and read the demo, I was here. I was a council member when we have to approve the M G N E bill for the Lacy Road. Um, here in the memo say, one of the phrases, it said, this is an estimate cost. M G N E will be, we, will build for actual up, up on completion of the project. So who know how much is gonna be this, you know what I mean? So and this is my, you know, if we are telling, this is our budget. And if you start working and digging and you see, I remember Lacy Road was a topography of the, the road, you know, they encountered all of this issue for the topography. Um, I think we need to tell them that, you know, we don't want to be surprised and say suddenly, oh, is, we changed order, is X amount increase, you know? So um, so that one is my concern about because that, this, when I was reading the memo, it's like Lacy Road came to my mind, you know what I mean? So um, and, and this is a very, very expensive pill to swallow. Um, I wanna tell you that. Um, I don't know. I, I know that we need to do it, but you know, it's half a million dollar more that we are approving here. Half a million dollar. And even though, yes, the TID is gonna pay. Yeah, the TID pay, but the, at the end of the day, we are paying for the TID, you know what I mean? So um, so my question to Misty is um, if we um, if we add this extra cost to the TID, because this one is in TID number four?
Four.
Okay. This is one of the TID that we are planning to close in the next one or two year. It's gonna affect the life of the TID if we include this project?
Go ahead, Misty.
Uh, partially. So we expect to close that TID in the next two or three years. Uh, it does partially hinge on those projects getting completed. Um, but it, we wouldn't have hit that magic April fifteenth date either way, likely. Um, so not exactly, but kind of, it will affect it.
So that, so, okay, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So that one is another very hard pill to swallow, okay? Because I uh, I am expecting for this tax incremental district four to close sooner, you know? And then if we put more stuff there, we are, you know, we are prolonging the life of the TID. Um, so I don't know. I, I know that is, this is a necessity and, and do we have to do this? Do we need to worry this? You know? The cable under, you know, I don't know. The cable under, you know, I don't know. This is, that's it.
Yeah.
Hold on, I got Jay and then I can go to Dave.
Got it, Jay.
Got you.
Well, I, ultimately, this has to be done. So if it doesn't get done in the next couple of years, then when development starts occurring south of Lacy Road on the Hartong property and whatnot, that's already in the fooda, it'll have to be done because there will be additional things going on there that are going to make this happen. And if it happens at that point, it's going to cost a lot more. So I think, I think this is the time to do it. And yeah, you might add, you might add another few months to the TID closing out, but I think at this juncture, it's well worth it.
Julia?
Dave, go ahead.
In my mind, you know, the, the driver is the gates, you know, if they, the gates, when they open, you know, if they're too close to the, the line, I, I have, I have mixed feelings, you know, the remaining, the other poles going down Lacy and, and the other ones on, if Sine, if they're in our reconstruction, there's nothing we can do. They have to go underground. But my mind, it's, it's really that issue of, are the gates going to, when they're open, be too close to that, that line? And I don't, I don't know that specifically, you know? Bill can, you know, that detailed design hasn't been done, Bill, or, or has it? Maybe you can, you can enlighten me a little more on that.
Yes, MG&E did some preliminary designs for the intersection and their lines through that area, given where our traffic signals are going to be located, where the new gates and signals are going to be located for the railroad. And they gave us a worst-case scenario. It's been reviewed through three layers of their management, so the estimate is, is good. They've taken into account what happened on Lacy Road to the east or to the west of there. They don't want to see that happen. The city doesn't want to see that happen again. So they're, they're very good with their numbers. They are overinflated so that we don't run into an issue like that. And there's contingency built into that in case we, it, it's the worst-case scenario, you know, that there's no traffic control. They have to provide it. There's, everything's in the way. They got to relocate it. They, they've taken into account, you know, any contingency that they could think of for, for that project. That's why it is high. If, this is, as I mentioned, the worst-case scenario, that if we decide, you know, it, there just isn't any benefit to it, to, to underground this, you know, and we have to go, we want to do the overhead line route. It would be less expensive. And we're just trying to secure the fu, we have to have the funds under contract before the end of May, May 27th, in order to have the funds available to do the project. And if we decide not to do it, then the money goes back to the TID. And is that about right, Misty?
All right. Any other questions?
Bill, Bill, back to, I'm not sure you answered Julia's question, though. Does it have to be, you know, do we either have to go higher or do we have to go underground? Is that a, a foregone conclusion? Or don't we, don't we know yet, I guess?
It's preferred to go underground. That's the city's and railroad's position, given the signal locations. But MG&E could have a redesign to go overhead, too. So we're just trying to secure as much as we need for the worst-case scenario. Otherwise, we can't ask for it, you know, past May 27th.
Jay?
Yeah, I think part of what we need to think about is planning for the future. And so, you know, you had mentioned, Dave, that there might only be one or two trains that cross there a week right now. But as development happens further south in that corridor, because, you know, a lot of our, a lot of our comprehensive plan is focused on building around that rail corridor and around the Highway 14 interchange. And so as more stuff comes, there'll be more trains there. And plus, I think, I mean, you know, there is something to be said for aesthetics. And as that area develops out, it will look a lot nicer to have the power infrastructure underground than to have these poles, you know, going along the road in, in an urban environment. So I, I, I do support this and I think we should go ahead with it. And when you have the opportunity to pay for it out of a TID, that's better than doing it just out of complete city property tax in the future.
I have Randy and then Camilla.
Well, I was going to just take off exactly on what Jay was saying. If, if, at the moment, these dollars are coming from TID, and I'm, I'm kind of turning to Misty. If this TID closes and we have to build out this intersection, which it will cost more, it will be out of direct taxpayer dollars, correct, at that point?
Go ahead, Misty.
Correct. And so any money that's left in the TID at the end of the life will get allocated back to all of the overlying jurisdictions. So if this was a project we want to do, having the TID pay for it, the city direct taxpayers is about 35%. And then the rest of the taxpayers pay into it as well. And where if we did it on our own, obviously, it'd be 100%.
100%.
Out of our direct taxpayers.
Okay. And I'm guessing the reason that the, that they want to go underground or buried is because when those gates come up, go up, there could be a conflict with the, the overhead power lines. Is that correct, Bill?
Yes, it's, that's correct.
That's, that's all I needed to hear.
If there's an accident where it hits a power pole, that would probably lay the power lines across the, the railroad. They don't want to see that. They want to, you know, have that improved as much as possible.
I, I mean, I'm guessing Dave would be able to answer this question. You could take it up higher, to a higher height, but, I don't know. It all has to stay within road right of way, but.
I have Camilla and then Julia.
I'm just curious, because this is still like a little bit uncertain, I get that we, we have to kind of lock this in so that we can use the TID funding. That's my understanding. Is this ever going to come back to council in any way? Or is this going to, is this kind of like, once it's done? Like, what is the next step here? Will, will we look at it again?
Is that Bill or Misty?
Yeah, as, as we go forward with the design, we'll have another public meeting. We'll be coming forward with cross-sections at that time. We should have a pretty good idea of whether we're going to be going overhead or underground. So that's, that's something that we're going to mesh out in the next two, two, two months or so.
So it'll be like when we get the cross-sections, we take a look at that, that's at that point, we'll probably have a better sense of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Julia?
Yes, in page 337, in the memo, under other consideration, it mentioned that the estimate does not include costs for future street lighting, a street lighting controllers of traffic signal controllers. So who's going to pay for that? How are we going to pay for that?
It sounds like that's part of the road reconstruction, so that'd be the city.
It's part of the road.
Set up the railroad. Build you on.
Yes. The, any power for the railroad pedestals or, or would be paid for through the TID as part of that estimate.
No, because here it says the estimate does not include, so it's not part of the estimate.
Right. But the railroad did include the, in their estimate, running power to their facilities.
So what they are referring about this?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part.
So what they are referring about this, you know, what are these future street lights or controller, or traffic signal controller?
Right. As part of the intersection, we're going to have to install a traffic signal controller. They did not, since they don't know where that, where that controller is going to be, they don't know what the estimate is. The city would apply for permit to run power to it. And it's just typical cost. It's somewhere between $2,000 to $3,000 for running the power from the, the power box, the actual power box to the controller or the lighting control cabinet or the signal for the railroad. So they did not include that in their cost. When we get the permits, we, we pay for those costs as part of the permit.
All right. Jim, did you have a comment? Oh, okay. All right. All right, Jay.
Yeah, just to, at this, this is the intersection of Sine Road and Lacy Road. So right now, we don't have a, and I looked through the CIP. I haven't gone through it in great detail, but I don't believe there's even a project in there for signalizing that intersection at this juncture.
It's part of the redevelopment of Sine Road, which we're develop, we're designing right now, actually.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, until they know where the cabinet's going to go, but we've, we've installed traffic signals at other locations. And, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to predict where that's going to go. Although it would be nice to know where to put the conduit right now, we just don't.
Anyone else? All right. I think I'm just asked for a roll call, because we need two-thirds and I don't know if it's going to be an answer or not. So sorry, Tracy, I'm going to make you do one more roll call quick.
Okay. Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Radifrada?
I will pass for now.
Alder Gerhart?
Yes.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Julia, do you want to?
Yeah, I would say aye.
All right. All right, that's approved. We did number four already.